Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Bristol Town Council Meeting of March 2nd. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. It's been a long time since we've had this many people in Town Hall, so I say welcome on behalf of my colleagues to all of you. So, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the first item of business is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item of business is the submission of minutes. We have the Town Council meeting minutes from February 9, 2022, and we also have the executive session meeting minutes from February 9, 2022.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the public hearings. The first one is Hector Angel from Casa Margarita's Bristol LLC doing business as Casa Margarita's Restaurant on 200 Gooning Avenue. And this is a request for transfer of the Class BV liquor license to George Moreno LLC doing business as Casa Margarita Mexican Restaurant. This is new ownership.
Is the applicant here? On Zoom? Okay, all right. So as the clerk pointed out, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? I'm assuming the applicant is here to speak in favor. Give him a moment.
Should be up.
Just a moment, please. In here.
Hello, everyone. Sorry, I thought I was on mute there for a second. Adam Thayer, on behalf of the applicant for the seller, the conveyor on this application, Hector Angel. I'm not sure if the petitioner, the recipient of the, hopefully recipient of the liquor license, if his attorney is on the Zoom at present, that'll be John Wiley and Anna Sheil at Orson and Brusini.
So, Adam, you are the attorney for the applicant, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, for Hector Angel, the seller, please.
For the seller, okay. So I would assume that you're here to speak in favor of this process?
Yes, please.
Is there anything that you wanted to add besides that?
Um, I don't believe so. This is a fairly straightforward conveyance. It's an asset sale. It's a rented property. We're in the process. We don't have the liquor license. Or my apologies, the tax letter of good standing in favor of the liquor license yet from the Division of Taxation, but we're working on that. And we have not held the actual conveyance closing. It's going to be, you know, probably signed and then held in escrow pending final approval by the Town Council.
Okay. Typically, when we, if we vote in favor, we would make that as part of the provisions as we normally do. So.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Anything else that you wanted to add?
That is it.
Okay. Is there anyone else to speak in favor?
Anna is on the call as well, solid promoter.
Great, thank you. It feels like the first European call, doesn't it? Just takes a little while, but it's really neat.
My name is Anna. I'm here as well. I represent Moreno LLC. I am here in favor of the transfer as well.
Excellent. Thank you, Anna. Is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Um, no, I don't think so. I think Adam covered everything. There are a couple of items that we're still working on, but other than that, it's going pretty smoothly.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to close the public hearings. Are any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is B2, and this is the resolution pursuant to Town Charter Section 208(c) to authorize the Town Council to sell the land and building known as Oliver School located at 151 State Street.
So again, this is public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. And just to remind everyone, the reason why we do this is part of our charter that anytime that we consider selling public land, it's giving the public the opportunity to speak, obviously, in favor or against for the sale of that property. By opening the public hearing, is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Solicitor, if you could walk us through that next step in regards to adopting this resolution, I suppose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have B2 as a resolution that was prepared, which sets forth some of the reasons behind this and has essentially three parameters already, that the town administrator is authorized to publish a request for proposals for the sale. And the town administrator will forward that to the Town Council. The responses to the RFP are consideration by the Council at a future date. And the public hearing held today, which will be deemed the public hearing required by Section 208(c) of the Charter. And I think there was another question, the clerk had indicated, if you wanted to designate a specific source of funding for the, where the, any proceeds would go, that might be something you can add or anything else you want to add, that would, this would be the time to add it to the resolution, although you could also do that when you decide what you're finally dealing with the property.
No, I agree. I think this is part of the conversation that we had, the earlier presentation, talking about Wally School and the proceeds of Oliver, Oliver, excuse me, to be used. Not necessarily just for that. I think it's more of a public buildings fund would be the most appropriate way to say that. Mr. Administrator, you and I spoke earlier today, and we had spoken about a base amount that you wanted to potentially consider.
Yes, we would go on the open market with the request for proposals, and we would start the floor, and the base bid amount would have to be 20% less, 20% less than the current tax assessment. So right now, it's $1,067,500. So we would start the base bottom bid would be 20% less than that. So we wouldn't accept anything less than that, 20% less than that.
Counsel? $1,067,000.
500.
Thank you. So. Is that acceptable to the council? Sure?
Yeah.
Okay, the discussion was, I just wanted to hear that number again. The assessed value is a little over $1 million, $1,067,500. And what was just discussed was to have a minimum accepted bid. We would not consider bids under, no less than 80% of that number, I guess would be another way to say that. Right? Okay. Anything else from the council? Is there a motion to that effect?
Second.
So there's a motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to resolve what has already been expressed. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2022-1, and this is for Chapter 16 of the Motor Vehicles, and this is to amend the parking on St. Elizabeth Street. This is first reading.
I move that we consider this first reading.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to register this as first reading. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D1, and this is the Moreno LLC doing business as Casa Margarita Mexican Restaurant, and this is the request for the Class BV liquor license.
Based on all the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve the Class BV liquor license.
Second.
Mr. Solicitor, would that include those recommendations as, because Tim made that motion?
Further recommendations?
Yes, I think, subject to the conditions set forth in the recommendations and meeting all other legal requirements.
So moved.
That's what I heard you say. That's wonderful. That was my second. Excellent. So, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item for businesses, D2, and this is Moreno LLC doing business as Casa Margarita Mexican Restaurant, and this is the request for the vicellin license.
Based on all the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve the vitally license.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve vicellin licenses. Are any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item of business is D3, and this is Michelle Martins for the Bristol Fourth of July Committee, and this is a petition for bingo license at the VFW. The date of from March 23rd and September 15th. It's noted as the 18th, but that was a misprint in the paper. But the petition is actually dated the 15th, but the actual agenda says the 18th.
So it's actually September?
It's actually September 15th, yes.
Thank you.
So what's the actual date?
September 15th.
Thank you. Based on the positive recommendations, so all the recommendations, I move the request.
Second.
Mary.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D4, and this is Brenda Tricetta from Mount Hope Farm for the Farmer's Market on 250 Medicom Avenue. This is a request for the Holiday Sales License.
Based on all the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve the Holiday Sales License.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D5, and this is Michael T. Burns for the Explore Bristol, and this is a request for One Day Dancing and Entertainment License for Friday Night Street Party with the event date of June 10, 2022.
Is Michael here? Did you want to speak to this?
I don't think I need to, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. What's this council's pleasure?
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F1, and this is also the petition from Michael T. Burns for Explore Bristol. This is for the British Motor Cars in Bristol. This is the request for the permission to use and sell alcoholic beverages and temporary street closure for the Friday Night Street Party event on June 10.
Based on all the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary to approve. Is there any discussion? I'll just take a moment and say that this is a wonderful event. I think either all of us or most of us have done this for many years. Thank you to all that put this on, Michael. To your efforts on this. This is a great event, and it's an appropriate event for the downtown. So, thank you.
Thank you for all the town's support over the years.
Yeah. My, how many years have we been doing this?
This will be the fifth, fifth year. We missed out last year, obviously because of COVID, but this will be the fifth, the fifth round.
Super.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F2, and this is Sarah Stanley Weed, 23 Bridge Street, Warren. This is a request for support of the Bristol Middle Passage Port Markers Project. I just want to note there were five late items that were submitted that are presented at the council dais.
Is Sarah here? So Sarah, before you speak, I just wanted to, please, and I'd ask you to state your name and address for the record. I wanted to share something first. I've, picking my words, this was very frustrating to me. It was frustrating because the proposed location is, has been dedicated already, and it was frustrating for a multitude of reasons. I can't tell you how many people have reached out to me. Let me be really clear. It's not the proposal that I'm frustrated with, because there's a lot of value here. And I think it's, we have a history here in Bristol. I don't think we need to be guilty about that history, because none of us in this room were there when this happened, but I think we need to recognize it. Do we recognize it right now? You bet we do. Can we do more? Yeah, I think we can. But my frustration is tremendous on the proposed location. This was dedicated already. I'll tell you what, my biggest frustration was, I didn't speak to the family, but I know people who have. And even if this council doesn't want to go that direction this evening, the mere fact of even being considered, I guess I likened it to, we gave them a house, and now we're proposing that somebody else live in their house with them. I, again, I'm picking my words, because I'm really frustrated. I want you to take this the right way, because I don't know you. I don't, but I do think that there's a lot of value in the proposal of it, but I've got a lot of concerns with ones that I've already expressed, and others is that this wasn't fully formed. There's not information enough for this council to make a decision on what's actually being proposed, the verbiage, the size, what it is, what it's not. So as you make your presentation, if you could share those, if you could maybe address those concerns that I've expressed, my colleagues, I'm sure, have their own thoughts that they would also, and we will have that discussion, but the floor is yours.
My name is Sarah Weed. I'm from 23 Bridge Street in Warren, Rhode Island, and I'm here representing the Bristol Middle Passage Project. Um, thank you for your comments, Mr. Chairman, and we have decided not to use that site, so we're not requesting use of that site tonight. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Catherine Zip, who's also on the committee and is Executive Director of the Bristol Historical Society, and she's going to do the presentation about our project.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have to say, I don't get a chance to talk to you guys very much. I talk to planning, I talk to zoning, I talk to HTC. So hello, my name is Catherine Zip. I am the Executive Director of the Bristol Historical and Preservation Society. I sit on the Middle Passage Port Marker Project for Bristol. I also am a participant in the East Bay BIPOC Research Group, as well as many other hats. Um, I have, we thought this would be a PowerPoint, because it was going to be virtual, but instead, obviously not. So I do have copies of the, of what we had visual materials that we had wanted to give to you. Is it all right to give it to you? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I was just wondering if it's possible to put the PowerPoint up on the screen, both for the people who are in the audience and for the benefit of the other people here, is that?
Do you have the PowerPoint?
I, I do not. The, all of the visual material is currently posted on the main page of the Bristol Historical and Preservation Society. People can go to that page and follow along if they would like. What I'm giving you, oh, I meant for the Town Council members. But I have, I have some extras.
Okay, if we, if we don't have it electronically, then never mind. I just didn't know if we had it electronically, so it could be displayed.
You, you do. Yeah, well, again, on the page of the Bristol Historical Society. I have, here, here's, so it should be.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I can pull up the website and share it if that's.
So we're going to take just an extra second, please, see if you can do that, because I'd like everybody to.
Certainly.
Mr. Solicitor, excellent. Thank you.
If I may, there are two pieces to the information that I gave you. One is a timeline. Listed timeline. And the other is some images to go along with the presentation, which I will try to make briefly. About three or so years ago, as you'll know, there was a Black Lives Matter March and a response to the Black Lives Matter March. And at that time, there were several other things happening, but I'm sure everybody remembers that there was a charge to this community to grapple with this history. And as the Executive Director of the Historical Society, I was on the front lines of doing this research. All three of the groups that I am participating in are working on this research. And what you see in that timeline is our first pass at a presentation of that research. I do have a copy of the timeline that we put it together, and I have two able assistants. If they wouldn't mind, it is very long, the timeline. So we can go through a little piece of it, but the material on our website allows you to watch this as a video, which may be a little bit easier. The findings were quite stunning. One is that slavery began very early in Bristol's history. Two of our town founders owned enslaved people. And on the second page of the presentation, maybe you would like to advance the presentation. Those are a list of the founding families of Bristol who all owned enslaved people. Again, it keeps on going. We can lay it out on the floor. That might be easy. As we learned more about this history, it became clear that we needed to manage it, present it, get it out to the public in a different, in a different way than we had in the past. So to answer the first question, which is, is this history out there? It's really not, not this new history. Stephen, if you wouldn't mind, so right about where you're standing, can you locate Adua and Polydor de Wolf? Those are the most famous, I think, of Bristol's enslaved people. They should be right about there, maybe a couple of panels over. Our timeline ends in 1808, not because slavery ends in 1808, but because it becomes more complicated and difficult to track. So just to note, you have all of these people before we even get to Adua and Polydor. In other words, the story that we have been telling is rather grossly incomplete. The Bristol Middle Passage Port Marker, could we have the next slide, please? Oh, um, so, and again, I think if it's convenient, you guys can lay that down on the floor, and people can come and look at it. We found that enslaved people in Bristol's history were pretty much in every part of it. There were Bristol soldiers from Bristol enslaved people serving as soldiers in the revolution. Next slide, please. Bristol served as a port of disembarkation for many enslaved people, particularly all the ones on this timeline. And next slide, please. Money from the slave trade was used to build many of the familiar sites around our town. This is something reasonably well-known. And next slide, please. A little less well-known is that slavery was intrinsic to the cultural institutions and industries that were here in Bristol. And next slide, please. And that many of the tourist destinations in our state have a history with slavery, and those are just four, but there are others. So the absence of this information in our landscape is really rather palpably felt. Could I have the next slide, please? Okay, so that brings us to this particular project, and this particular project is intended to do a number of things, and it's intended to not do a number of things, and I wanted to talk a little bit about that. So the Middle Passage Ceremonies and Port Markers Project is its own nonprofit. It is affiliated with UNESCO, and it works in tandem with UNESCO. The Middle Passage Port Markers Project is really better thought of as a process. It is a process to go through and to help manage this difficult history or hard history, is what it's often called in historic and preservation circles. This is very hard history. We found Bristol was extremely complicit in the slave trade and in a number of other ways. So what this committee is proposing is that we embark towards the final result of a port marker with the process intended to help us manage this history. In other words, to help us find ways to understand it, to help smooth, it's difficult to talk about, it's difficult to think about, to help the community through that process. And I want you to think it's important to think about this as a process and less about a product, although a product is important. To speak about the process for a quick moment, community input is vital, and that's partly why we're here. We want to have your community, your input as part of the community, as representatives of the community. We're hoping today for your blessing on beginning the process. Throughout the last few weeks, we have had, it's been very affirming. This has been a pretty quiet group for the last year and a half. But in the last two weeks, we've heard from people we never expected to hear from. This process is supposed to bring us together in the work of doing together the creation of this port marker, and that is in fact happening. People I never thought, who I've known in this community for 15 years, who I've never thought would be interested in supporting this marker, have said admittedly, quietly, and privately that they would, they think this is a good idea. They're interested in learning more. It's a tentative thing, but again, I think the process is beginning to work. It isn't going to be an easy process. It's going to be a messy process, and I imagine many of the people standing here are going to object to going through the process, but I hope that Bristol can do that. On the other side of the process, we will hopefully have a marker, a memorial marker. We're not really sure. I understand the frustration of, what does this look like? We don't know yet. That's part of the outcome of the process. There are many voices to be heard. We hope that they'll feel comfortable coming forward with their thoughts. And we hope that in the end, it's something that Bristol can be proud of. What we do know is that whatever results, whether it's an information sheet or a contemplative sculpture, whatever it turns out to be, it will participate in the UNESCO's Slave Route Project. That project is a, it's actually an international project. If you move to the next slide, please. These are the, I'm sorry, this is so small, but it's easier to see on your, on your printouts. These are the places so far, 55 sites in the United States alone that are doing this. This will, whatever the result of our process here is, will link us up with this larger history. So we are not being singled out. We are joining a group of other cities and places and sites around the world that are also grappling with this hard history. So there is, I think, much to be gained from this. From a general, I mean, it's a little crass to talk about this in sort of dollars and cents and such, but it is worth saying that many people come to Bristol looking for this history. I have people calling me all the time, and one guy was so upset, he called me back the next day. We don't really present this information. Think about it. Where can you go when you are from abroad looking at Bristol? Where can you go to find this history? Where is it? This marker, we hope, will be a step in that direction. Could I have the last slide, please? Okay, so we had a lot of people write letters of support for you, and I hope that some of the people behind me will hopefully maybe change their minds a little bit. We've had a lot of discussions in the last two weeks about the site. Given what we're hearing, we'd like to back off from the site. In fact, I think there's a number of other sites that have been proposed recently that are actually better than that, not to knock Michel Andre. It's a wonderful site. We liked it too. But there are some other sites that are in fact more appropriate for this monument around town, and what we would like to do is begin to really think and assess as a community which sites might be best and which sites might not be best for this particular marker. It's complicated. There are a lot of viewpoints. It's going to take some time. But we hope if we can all be open-minded, we can come to a good solution. I'd like to say three things that this project is not, because I think that this is important. Number one, this project is not about white people. Anybody who was looking at this marker and seeing all of those names on the timeline as being owned by white people, that is wrong. This marker is about honoring the African and indigenous people who were enslaved in this town in its early history and who built this town. It is not about their owners. It is not about the De Wolves. It is not about any other white person that owned any other person. It is about the enslaved and bringing that history to light and bringing those people to light. And I hope if you look at the timeline, you'll see we've constructed as much of this history as possible. So it's not about white people. Number two, it's not about critical race theory. This is not critical race theory. Critical race theory is an ideology that promotes or discusses or examines how racism is built into the structures of today. This is long past. We are 350 years past the beginning of this history. This is not critical race theory. It's history. And frankly, it's indisputable history. And the last thing that, while we hope there will be reparative components to this project, we don't expect one monument and one marker to fix all of our racial issues in this country. So we don't expect all of a sudden things to be equal. What we do hope is that we can create something that is thought-provoking, contemplative, brings people peace about a difficult and shared history, and begins a conversation that can maybe lead down the road towards a better relationship within our country, towards less fracturing between groups, and just a better future for our children. Thank you very much. Do you have questions?
Counsel.
I always have questions.
Sure.
You want me to save them for later?
Nope.
So I have a couple of questions, let me just start. So what is the role in the, in in this project that you're promoting right now? Where where do the descendants fit in? Because I read the article in the, in the letter to the editor, um, and I was kind of surprised to see that, because I know there's been some work on the descendants going uh going the past couple of years, I believe I attended a Zoom meeting um about that. It might have been around towards the start of COVID. Um, and so I'm, I'm very, very, very concerned that with all the talk of DEI in this town.
Yeah.
If they're not included from the ground up, you know, it's kind of like, why do we talk about having a committee when we're not even doing it? We're not walking along, so that's one, that's my one question, like it is, and then I have another one.
Sure, so this project has been in fits and starts. Um, there are people who have been working on this project predating of, I I mean, going on eleven years now. Um, the the movement has waxed and waned, as you can imagine, the same way that the politics of the issue has waxed and waned. Three years ago, uh, when there was this charge, uh, the descendants were a part of this organization. Um, and the organization, the, this is, it's a, it's a consensus based organization, it is, um. You have to fight for air sometimes, and I think they got frustrated because there was a full speed ahead charge and not enough listening. Here we are three years later, and we invite everybody, we invite them, we hope that they'll feel comfortable. It's new leadership, we have really some excellent um listeners, better listeners than I am, um, on our team. And what we do, I, all I can say is, uh, they have not been a part of the the group, or this Isaac's group has not been, Descendant Voices in Action has not been a part of this group. We do have other uh descendant voices, not the De Wolves, but we have others, and we have other African American voices um on our, on the committee as well. So I guess what I'm saying is, the last few weeks have been very affirming as far as people reaching out. Everybody's invited to the table, and I hope that uh Descendant Voices in Action will reconsider and give us another try.
I I I don't really profess to know how many different descendant groups are out there, but I am concerned if there are no descendants involved with your project. I mean, because it's, you said it's not about white people, but in fact it is, because a bunch of white people are coming forward and uh and talking about this. And I don't know to what degree the people whose lives are impacted, I mean, you know, I mean, I could argue we're all impacted by it.
Right.
You know, um, the the relatives and and descendants of those um enslaved people, you know, where are they to give their view, like where they think is most appropriate? Like, so I don't know if you've had that discussion, how many people you have involved. Um, you know, I've seen who the letters all are from. Um, I I can't say that I know all those people, but most of them I know are, you know, white people.
Right.
Um, so that is one, that is like a very big concern that I have.
Yeah.
It's only gotten a little bit more concerning to me in the last day or two, in the last few hours, actually.
Yeah.
Um, and then the other thing I have is a question. So I want to just be clear, I'm not opposed to the project. I am, I am concerned that it's sort of like, not really, it's not prepared, it's not full baked, baked full, baked enough to be in front of the council, let me put it that way.
Okay.
You know, um, I think that that is a lot of work to be done, and a lot of, you know, site specific things that we don't need to be involved in right now, until there's a better proposal on the table. That's my personal opinion, I don't, I don't want to speak for my colleagues. The other thing that concerned me a lot in the letters I um that we got, and I understand how politics works, and somebody usually writes a letter, so I'm guessing it may have been you. Um, and then everybody kind of either takes a piece and changes it around a little bit or signs it exactly as it is. But almost everybody picked up this paragraph, which says, "The proposed marker on Public Lane in State Street Dock is the first step in helping the community acknowledge its difficult history, move move towards um racial justice and healing." And it's always the first step, like it's, that is repeated in almost every letter. And I want to know, what is the steps? Like, what is, this is the first step to what? You you mentioned, um, you know, reparations, is it towards reparations? Like, what is it that you're trying to, what is the big picture? Like, if we all say this is a great project, what what is the next step? Like, what will you be here for next year? I mean, that's what I like, I like to know the bigger picture.
Well, I'm hoping next year we'll have completed this project and I won't be here at all.
I mean, down the road, I don't mean like literally.
Yeah, well, again, this is a group with a lot of different ideas. And um, just to answer your first issue about descendants, um, everybody is welcome at these, at these meetings. Um, I think our next step is to hold a really, now that you can, a very public meeting. We can have it in person even, which would be very exciting, um, to see if we can bring people to this movement. Um, the descendants have been difficult to find, not because Isaac's group is not out there. Um, I've been working with Isaac and with Descendant Voices in Action for the last year and a half. They're lovely, they're a lot of fun to work with, great sense of humor, a lot of great ideas. Um, the research that we have lying out on the floor for you was the next part of that. The only enslaved people that really anybody knew about were Polydor and Adua, um, and maybe a handful of other De Wolves. So it has been difficult to know who the descendants are, because we didn't know who the enslaved people are. Um, I gotta tell you, if you look on this list, you'll see a lot of unnamed negro, man, woman, boy, child. We will be unable to trace those people, but we do have new names to trace. And as we go forward, um, something else that the Historical Society has been working on is genealogies. Um, and so that has helped us figure out what has happened to the family lines and given us some new people to reach out to. It's a little awkward, and honestly, it takes some guts to to cold call somebody in this way. Um, but we're committed to doing it. So um, I, again, all I can say is, um, this is a process and we're doing our best to 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 do everything. Um, about, uh, just sorry to get to your second question. Um, so you you're, the point of this is to, I mean, you know, with pie in the sky ideas, right? We'd like to fix the world, honestly. Um, so is this the first step in fixing the world? God, I hope so. I mean, would it, it were that easy? I don't think it will be, but the first step in something more conceptual. Um, again, this is not, I don't think any of us are under any illusion that this is going to, you know, create reparations and fix everything for everybody in Bristol. There are many other things that are much more suitable to reparations than a monument, um, more concrete things. But I think that one of the first steps that's really important towards healing and and bringing ourselves together is an acknowledgement of what happened in the past, and understanding of what happened in the past. Um, and that's what this project is the first step to. What I'm personally hoping for is that we create this marker, we put this information out into the world, and the community takes it from there. People use the information for what they need that information for, whether it's in school programs or to write better interpretive programs or to create walking tours or just simply to know where they came from. I hear that a lot from descendants is they don't know where they came from. Well, here's a first start on where they came from. So I I I appreciate that you're asking, what's, what am I going to come back for? I mean, ideally, nothing, but hopefully, great change. I'm an optimist. Are there other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a few questions. Well, we can't change Bristol's history, but we can definitely acknowledge and learn from it. Um, and from what I'm hearing from you, it sounds like we're still in the concept stage of this, is that true?
Yeah.
And I'm glad to hear you're interested in, you know, locating other sites, because I definitely don't think that site that you have earmarked is the right site. So can you tell me a little bit about what the planning requirements are around this and including the descendants? Or have, are you following all the, is there a booklet of requirements, that sort of thing? You know what I mean? Where somebody comes in and stamps it and says, "We've hit all those requirements, we're part of that UNESCO connection," right? Because that's going to connect us with South America, anybody else that has this marker all throughout the world, correct?
Yes.
So um, is there anything like that?
Yeah, so the only requirement is that we need to have the um Sites of Memory logo on it somewhere. That's it. And uh, that logo is 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 in there, it's on one of the pages there, it's the the UNESCO um thing with the the chain goes into the bird. Um, and it need not be front and center, it just needs to be on there somewhere. Could be, you know, the base of whatever, or, you know, the front of an information plaque. Um, that is the only requirement. It has been, uh, I have to tell you, I'm learning a ton from this process. Um, it is very much a process. Uh, the head leadership of the Middle Passage Port Marker process, while they are certainly available and have attended several meetings and offered lots of guidance, they're very hands off, and I think that that is uh an asset, because it's important that this community make this process what this community needs to be. Um, we, the people who have been, just in the last few months, have been listening. Um, that is our job, we're all, we all need to listen, everybody who's going to participate in this project needs to listen. Um, in the last two weeks, again, many people came forward in the last two weeks. Um, and that was partly what brought about a reconsider, reconsideration of the site. Um, not just because of the concerns that were raised, but just simply some other people said, hey, you know, did you think about this? And so I think we need to back up, it's going to be a very messy process. I don't think anybody should think this is bing, 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 which it were, but it isn't. But it's important to come together as a community to to go through the process. And if we need to take steps back, we can do that. There's no timeline, there's no pressure. Um, there's, you know, we we move forward as the community needs us to move forward. We move backwards as the community needs to move backwards, which we're doing right now. We're we're taking a step back on the site. Um, I think that you guys are very right to ask, what is it that you're, what that, that we're proposing? And and the answer is that we don't know, because we haven't been through the process. We don't know what it's going to look like. We only can commit to what we've committed to, which is, we're going to fundraise for it. Um, we are going to make sure it's it's the least possible maintenance possible. Um, going to try and make sure it's vandal safe, I mean, qualities about it, I don't, I don't know, is it going to be big? Is it going to be small? We don't know yet. And we don't want to limit it at this moment in the process. We don't know what, we're hoping an artist will come forward, we don't know what they would want to do. And maybe there's some really tremendous other idea out there that we just haven't thought of yet.
Yeah.
So again, it's a process, and honestly, I expect controversy and I expect mess. And I welcome it, because that's the process.
Well, I think if my colleagues are in agreement, I think we need to refer this to the town administrator and the community development to help guide and find a suitable site that is in an agreement with all the residents of town, that we can all learn from this, use it as an educational situation, being aware, but something that we're all happy where, with the site. And we we take this slow and one step at a time.
Absolutely.
So those, that's just my thoughts.
So I, Tim, I agree with the overall theme of what you're saying. But I don't believe that A, it would be fair or appropriate to put it on the administrator or uh director of community development at this point in time, as stated by um Mary, and then also stated by you, that we don't know what we're asking for yet. Fair.
Yeah.
Thank you for the honesty. But it isn't, it's not appropriate to take efforts and energies away from both of these fine people to find the place for you. I don't think that's what you're asking.
No, it's it's not.
I truly believe that the spirit of Tim's point is there, which is, you find a couple of places? Yes, it makes sense to vet that out and say, is it appropriate? Has it been um already dedicated, right? Is it in a place that we can do it? I I must say too, is that there are other opportunities in town, Linden Place. There's a a letter of support from Linden Place. I don't mean to put too much onus on them, I'm sorry, but what an absolutely outstanding location. Is there other ones like that? Yeah, I think so. I would ask this, is that at the end of this, and I know there is other people here to speak. Yes, I'm going to allow public dialogue in a moment. I would ask that, as you listen to all of this, if you're, if you have a unified voice on something, please have one person share that unified thought, because we don't want to hear the same thing, you don't either, I know. But back to this, I don't think it's appropriate that we refer to anything. Uh, again, I like the spirit of Tim's thought, I think it's absolutely correct, but come back to us when you're ready. Um, I I would prefer that we table this, not yet, because we're still going to have dialogue on it. But we table this, and then it comes back to us when it's ready. We would, when we were looking at the projects, ninety percent ready. When they come in front of us, it's, we know the verbiage, we know where, we know what it looks like, we know what it is, to use your words, we know what it is. And that's, I think that's critical. And um, so again, I like the spirit, I just don't, I don't think it's appropriate to refer at this point, so.
Mr. Chairman, um, and I agree with a lot of my colleagues that the site that is currently in the agenda right now is is a nonstarter. It is just not the place where we believe something like this should be, because it's already a place that is honoring somebody who's fallen. So I think we can mostly all agree on that. Uh, one of the questions I have for you though, so I'm going to switch gears a little bit, is that I I was doing a little research on some of the sites of conscience and and everything like that. And um, you know, I've I've looked at some of the ones that are all over the country, places in South Carolina, uh, places in Louisiana, and and places all over the Northeast. There's a couple that are um being considered right here in in Rhode Island, at least one of them's in. Um, there's already one in Warren, um, and then there's one that's uh being considered in Newport. And I saw uh the one that's being considered in Newport has been, it's been kind of taken a little while. And I totally understand that, like, something like this needs to take its time. It's something that you absolutely have to get right. It's something where, you know, I always say this, Mr. Chairman, right? You measure twice and and you cut once on these types of things. Um, and so I guess my question for you is, based upon some of the efforts that have already happened out there on this, what are some of the things that we can learn from the experience in Warren? And I went over there today to actually look at the the marker. It was, it's right by the Town Wharf, it's, um, it stands about up up to my shoulder. Um, it doesn't seem like the type of marker that I would like to have in 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 Bristol, if we were gonna, gonna have one. Um, because I think in Bristol, we're we're a lot different than the way they they may have done it there. What can we learn from what's happened over in Warren and what's happened in Newport so far? Like Newport, for instance, has Liberty Square, they have a site, it's picked out. Now they're going through the process of deciding, what's this going to look like? Is it just going to be a a marker that's, you know, shoulder height or anything like that? Whereas the one in Warren is, I think, profoundly different.
Hmm.
Um, right there at the Town Wharf, I walked by it today. Nobody, nobody was around it or or anything like that. I I think I've walked by it many, many times, and I I don't think I've ever noticed it existing. So what what can we learn from those two experiences from those towns in in Rhode Island, do you think?
Yeah, so I hate to put you guys on the spot. Uh, Victoria Johnson of the Newport Middle Passage Port Marker sits on our committee. Um, and so she has been super helpful in guiding us through these initial steps. Um, in fact, one of the first things that the Newport Middle Passage Port Marker project did was secure a resolution of support from the City Council of Newport. So we're here for that. It would be super helpful to have that. Um, uh, I, what can we learn? Um, I think one of the things that we can learn is, um, what do we want? I, this is not different, I have a child starting to look at college. I think this is not totally dissimilar from um looking and seeing, what do you like and what do you not like? What works for you and what doesn't work for you? I certainly have my ideas, I would imagine many people in the audience have their ideas. The point of the process is to come together and share our ideas and come to a consensus. It's that consensus that is the magic of this process, that's what we're looking for. The marker is somewhat incidental than the fact of going through the process. Mrs. Johnson, that's how she goes, it's how you regard her. Um, I've worked with her for a decade now, and um she is just an incredible voice and so inspiring. And when you are down and have been called a racist for the forty-fifth time, she picks us up and says, "Keep at it, keep going." Um, I think we have much to learn from what she's doing in Newport, even if it is taking forever and a day. Um, Warren is another one that has been inspirational. Sarah here has led the Warren Project for eight years, nine years, six years. Um, and her voice in how we approach the research and how we think about the history has been invaluable. Um, I am grateful for every voice that's coming along, because I don't personally know how to do this. I only know how to go through the process. So all of these voices, I think, are incredibly helpful for us. Um, about, can I just say one momentary thing before I answer the the next question, if there is one? The wonderful thing about having proposed this site on State Street is how many people re-engaged with the process. Right? I hope every single one of these people who was here to tell me that this was a bad site will also come to the next meeting where we can discuss other sites. This has reinvigorated the project in a way that was really unexpected. And so I embrace that, and I hope that that makes this a better process and ultimately a better project. This is about coming together, this is about consensus.
Catherine, just just one more thing. In in terms of your planning and as you're going about going through the process of figuring out what you want and and everything like that, uh, I did a little bit of, you know, historical research in town about um other monuments that have been erected in town. And um, you know, there have been, um, in the nineteen nineties, there were some efforts uh to erect uh monuments. It wasn't a uh a monument related. a monument relating to what's on discussion today. But there was in nineteen ninety, an effort to create a Heritage and Discovery Committee, which eventually culminated in you know, a monument. And by the way, Mary, I saw one of your campaign ads or
I was on that. My father was on that.
Yeah, yeah. So it was nineteen ninety, right around nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-two. And when you look at it, that Heritage and Discovery Committee was a meeting that was open to the public. They actually met in Town Hall to talk about this and they did it for about two to three years. So it was a very long process. And so I guess if I, you know, my desire would be that, you know, that same kind of effort go in, open to the public, for people to have the discussions that need to be had before, you know, settling on like the site that we were proposed today.
So our project, I would say, I mean, I don't know how many projects you, you guys have worked on lots of projects. I shouldn't say that. I've worked on plenty of projects and what I, one of the things that I find remarkable about these community projects, which I adore working on, I think this is what I am supposed to do. There's an initial ramp up, lots of excitement. Then there's a, oh my God, how are we going to do this? And then a lot of times they get stuck. And the Middle Passage Port Marker Project got stuck. And COVID happened and there was disagreement and it was too hard and we didn't have enough information and it got stuck. And what happened and we were really, the meetings continued, but they were, we were talking to ourselves about the same issues. I mean, preaching to the choir would be a good way to describe it. And honestly, there was not much going on. I wouldn't have invited anybody to those meetings anyway. Long about November, we reached out and we, we had a change in leadership and we reached out and reached some new people on the committee. And that has broken the logjam, would be a good way to put it. And all of a sudden, things were kind of full speed ahead, a little faster. I think we've learned that we need to slow it down quite a lot. And so really, this movement has, the logjam has broken really only since November. I don't think we realized that there were so many people interested in this project. Again, it had been stalled for such a long time. So the conversation that's been happening in this town over the last two weeks is incredibly exciting and affirming. The next step, now that we've pulled back, the next step, big fat public meeting. As many people as want to come can come, please come. We can do a better job. I know it's been COVID, but we can do a better job of reaching out. We could certainly put an ad in the Phoenix. There's lots of ways to reach out to people, lots of mailing lists and Facebook and all of that. Word of mouth, whatever, we're supposed to great community for coming together. I think that's the next step. Even if it's fifty million people sitting in, I don't know, whatever room can accommodate fifty million people, but I think that's the next step. I think we need to take it slow, compile. I mean, I do believe that the first step is the site because I think any, any, you know, the site, no artist can really come up with anything absent of the site. So I think that is the first thing to ascertain. But I think we get, need to get all the options on the table. And then again, as part of consensus, figure out a way to make this work and come to an agreement. Have to say at this point, I'm starting to think maybe it's more than one marker? Maybe. I don't know, but that's part of the thing that we need to go through. So if that answers your question.
And then one last question, Mr. Chairman, if that's all right, sorry. You'd said that maybe the first thing is, you know, settling on the site. Do you think it might be putting together the resolution? Like they may have done in Newport or in Warren? Was, was the, in the resolution, was there the site?
Oh, you know, I don't know. That's, that's a good question. I can certainly find out for you, but it was early in the process. I remember Mrs. Johnson told me, it was actually one of the first things she said to me, and this was easily five or six years ago, was she said, you're going to need the support of the town council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you for the twenty-plus letters that you sent to all of us. Very much appreciated in one way. On the other way, not very much appreciated with the verbiage used in throughout the letters. Especially when you use the word acknowledge. I looked it up because obviously limitation is says acknowledge to own or admit knowledge. It's a little difficult for any of us to own or admit knowledge of any of this. You know, yes, that it happened many years ago. Is there a history? You bet. I was a teacher for thirty-one years and believe me, I am very cognizant of the history of this now. I am. You know, in Linden Place, they has done a great job in ways, you know, limited, somewhat limited. But they've addressed, they've had tours, they have not hidden that under a rock. You know, so we need to keep that in mind. It's far from it. So when I'm hearing that you, the community needs to listen, I don't think we can, I mean, even with our own children, we don't force them to listen. We hope that they will listen and they hope that they take on. But to force the community to listen? And when you're using the term, this is going to be messy and you've used it three times. I don't, why would it be messy? You know? I, I'm not quite sure. I'm a little confused that the process may be messy. I don't know. Should it be confrontations? I don't think so. We haven't had any issues in the past. People have listened. People that are willing to listen and want to and be educated about it by all means. But for us to impose, to even ask this body to impose on the rest of the community that you've got to listen and this is the process? I don't think so. But please, can you explain what you mean by messy? Because I was very confused when you kept repeating that term.
So I mean, I, I thought it was messy, self-explanatory. I think that it will be.
Well, yes and no.
Okay. So I mean, what I mean by messy is that there will be exactly things like what has happened tonight, which is that we thought this was, we thought this site was a good idea. Turns out it was not a good idea. I think it's going to be a lot of put forward an idea, bat it around. It's going to take a while to, you know, this is a good idea. This is a bad idea. Think about it a little bit and then come back with what is a good consensus. That's what I mean by messy. I guess, I guess what I really mean is that in particular, after several years of working with Descended Voices in Action, one of the things that I've heard from them is that they do not often feel their voices heard. They do not often feel that they are listened to, that their viewpoint is not the same as everyone else's. Those are some of the things and Isaac is here. He's welcome to correct me. He has taught me many things and those are among them. Sometimes, I mean, imagine you are in your, you're at your own family reunion or it's Christmas time and there's twenty-five people yelling over the table and you have to scream and and you know, you're trying to get somebody to just pass you the darn sweet potatoes and, you know, could you please listen? I, that's the kind of thing that I expect. I expect lots of viewpoints. I expect lots of people who I hope will work at communicating. But we're all going to have to be patient and really listen and not jump to conclusions, not dismiss other ideas just because they're not ours. That's the kind of thing I'm thinking about, right? When you're, when you're really sitting with what I hope is the Bristol family and talking about, well, what do you think is best? You know, and you've got great uncle so-and-so saying, ah, don't do it there, do it here. And then you've got great aunt Minnie saying, well, what about over here? And you know, that's the kind of, you know, discussions really, that I think we need to go through in order to get this. Those are not, I don't know about you, but my, my family is crazy and it is impossible to get consensus. So I guess I'm feeling familiar in that sense, but that's, that's what I mean. I think it will take as long as it will take. Tony, can I just say that I'm really gratified and glad to hear that you know this history? But so many people come forward to me.
Not the detail that you've shown here this evening, but I'm pretty familiar with the, I used to give tours as well with students.
Yeah. And that's wonderful. I mean, so many people, especially again, three years ago, when all of this came out, I would get phone calls that were along the lines of how come I never learned this in school? How come this was hidden to me? Or then I loved the ones that were, did you know that Polydor and Adewo are buried out there? I did know, but thank you for telling. There was a real hunger and a need for knowing this. I think that this marker project is one way of getting that information out there. It's not the only way. This is another thing that I've learned from working with Descended Voices in Action is that there needs to be many ways and that the descendants themselves have a viewpoint on how they would like to get this information out there. So our timeline is just simply one way of organizing the information. It's not the only way. But again, I think that, that there's, there's more that needs to be done. I mean, that really, it's what gets me when I get these calls are really the betrayal of, I didn't know this and it's my town. And how could that be kept from me? And so again, I'm glad you know, that's awesome. And I imagine all of you were very familiar with this, but there's a lot of people out there that don't.
But when you're saying kept from them, I mean, who would be keeping? I mean, you, you, you have their sort of society there, which I've gone to a couple of times and recently, quite a few years ago, actually, I took students in there, okay, to tour the facility. But with that, I'm not sure. I'm a little confused and Mary raised some good points to where's the wagon going? Okay. Who's riding on the wagon? You know, it really raises some concerns with me. It really does. And again, am I against recognition? Not at all. Not at all. Okay. But I am concerned of this approach. Okay. That one, your folks did not do the research to find out that the place was not available. Second, to send these type of letters, I'm telling you, this I found insulting. Insulted by some of the stuff that was noted in some of these letters, like you have to acknowledge self-reflection. Really? I came here in nineteen seventy to this country. I was fourteen years old. I, I may do, and I learned to see how other people struggle through. But to impose on the community? You're not going to get me involved in that, not to impose. I'm not going to make anybody listen. They, if they wish to do it and be informed, by all means, have the information available. That's wonderful, the timeline. And it certainly, I'm going to make sure that I take a peek at at some point. Okay. But to say, you know, as you pointed, they need to listen and impose on the people? I don't think so.
Well, we're not imposing this on anybody. Everybody is welcome at the table who wants to be and nobody is forced to be there if they don't want to be. And it's okay with, with all of us if you vote against this. That's all right with me. I mean, personally, you know, I won't speak for the rest of my group.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, of course.
You know, we keep hearing that the history is not well-known and it probably may not be, but I mean, I, I grew up here. I always, I've always known this history. Now granted, when I was in school like a zillion years ago, you know, we had like historic preservation classes and things like that as part of our high school curriculum. And we went on tours. You know, I took those classes, went on walking tours of the downtown and, you know, people whose names like you'd be very familiar with. I think you would be like Lombard and others who used to teach, you know, come with us and, and point things out. So and I remember, I can't remember the details. I don't even know where my book is, but I remember right after college, I was working on the tricentennial book and trying to do little excerpts from some of other publications of the different ethnic groups and communities in Bristol. And I mean, that's where I learned a lot about the Wood Street neighborhood and things like that. So I think, I think the idea that people, maybe some people don't know, they might be new to the community. I mean, it's not anything that's ever been, I don't think it's ever been hit it. Like we've always known this. But maybe some people are surprised by it because they don't think about it. Generally, people in this country don't know their history. That's, that's part of the problem. And so I think, you know, that's, that's the thing. But I would say that, I mean, you've got to keep in mind the ages, but I don't know what is covered on the walking tour that the third or fourth graders do every spring, upper graders. I mean, that may be something that could do easily for their age and understanding, make sure that's incorporated. They go through all these buildings downtown. I mean, you know, I look forward to, I live in downtown. I look forward to seeing their brightly colored shirts out there in the spring. And I mean, whatever else may be taught at the high school. I mean, I know there's been over the years, attempts at legislation about without a history and so forth and so on. I don't know to what degree that is actually done. But I mean, I think this is a big part of our history in Bristol, but all of the state and, and and so when you look at that, I do think that, you know, I had to, since Tony brought it up, I mean, the messy comment, the process and the process and, you know, it's hard to talk about it. I really don't, I think that's dramatizing it a little bit. I don't really think, I think people would be interested in knowing more about this, in working on this, in recognizing the fact that we are going to acknowledge this history. And I, I don't think it's going to be like, it shouldn't be a controversy. In my, in my view, but what happens is when people don't have all the ducks in a row, like that site should have been vetted before you decide about it. Because it's not, you know, just last year, we did one of the, one of the monuments down there, the big red wall that I mean, that was, I think that was in the paper. I mean, I had pictures of us all there, you know, so I mean, a lot of it is, you know, yeah, there's a lot of space down there and you want to put a little tiny marker somewhere away from there. But I think that is what concerns people. Okay. That's not hard to find out, but that's already been, there's been at least two things to Michael Andrew there. Like twice we've been down there to dedicate different parts. So I think you have to do like, you have to do your research slightly better in finding these things out. That would be my thing. And I think that was going to ask, I think you answered like the bits and starts of the project, of the process so far, but it was how, when you're saying like, people don't really come, well, how do they know about it? That's what I was going to ask. I think sort of said, well, maybe I'll have an ad in the paper. How do people know that these meetings were going on? And you know, you've got to be, if you want people to participate, you've got to be clear. You've got to be clear that whoever's there is going to be respectful because we've all been called lots of names over the last year and a half over things that shouldn't have been happened. And I just want to go back to the Michael angry issue in the waterfront for a second. I imagine that the entire group behind you is here because of that, because most of them are firefighters. And he was a firefighter before he was there. And they're not going to let that be trampled on. And so whether you think much about veterans memorials or you don't, the fact that Bristol does and veterans groups, the fact that we have a terrific volunteer fire department who was going to defend, who is, who's moved the agenda forward on honoring Michael Andrew. I mean, I think like it's unnecessary that they have to come out tonight. I mean, I'm glad they did. I don't want you guys to take it wrong, but it shouldn't be, this should not be, like you said, oh, it's great. They've been, there's a lot of chatter about a lot of talks. They should not have to be here to like potentially argue the fact that this has already been a memorial to somebody else. And five minutes of research, and I know you're all good researchers, five minutes of research, you would have found that out, just walking that site. And so it puts a lot of, like a bad feeling and a lot of, or a bad taste in people's mouths, let's put it that way. Because they've already had to start this process off with it, with a fight over the location. It's already been dedicated twice to somebody. You know, and I think those are things that you have to be careful about when you get into this business because you don't really need that. That's where the controversy comes in. It's not, I don't think there's going to be big controversy if people say, oh my God, I don't know that we could talk about this topic. And this is part of our history. Let's acknowledge it. Let's move on and let's, you know, and embrace what is, it is. And you know, to have a place, I mean, I like my own concept of where this could be and what it could be and let's just like get it done, you know? Instead of saying, oh, people might get upset talking about the topic. People don't want to talk about the topic. I don't really think that's the case. I think there's certain groups of people that make that an issue. And then make it, and it constantly coming here. And if they don't get exactly what they want, then the name, then the name calling starts. And I, and I know people will be hesitant to get involved with this project. If that's what they think it's going to turn into. And I asked Steve this very question like when I talked to him the other day. I mean, we've had a lot of stuff on inclusion and so forth and diversity. And if you don't agree a hundred percent, you're in big trouble. And I don't want to see this project turn into that. So I think it's going to be incumbent upon all of you to make sure this is, this is a process that people feel comfortable coming out. Whether you reach out to people through the fire department, through the churches, through the whatever, and get some input in there or you do a survey. I don't know. There's lots of ways you can do that. But I think it's going to be, you know, I think that's going to be the work that you have cut out for you. Yeah. And just to bring people on board and know that this is something that, you know, there's really no right or wrong answer. Like what it's going to look like, where it's going to be, that's like the thing. So that's my thoughts on this project.
Just a couple of quick comments because I remembered something very important. I lost my notes somewhere in the handouts here. So my apologies to whoever has them. But something that I gravely overlooked was that I wanted to offer an apology to Michael Andrew's family for this because we did, we just, we did go down to see it and we just didn't see it that way. And we're very sorry that we didn't see it that way. That just, again, this is why we need multiple voices. So I did want to say that to Mr. Andrew's family, if he's here. We were very sorry. That was not in the spirit, of course, of this project. I'd also like to say that had we not proposed a site, I don't think we would have gotten nearly the people, nearly enough people's attention. nearly enough people's attention if I had just advertised this.
You know what? That particular part, and I was going to come back to that, that is what, what sticks with me so strongly. I'm looking at a forty foot scroll of research that you did.
It's actually fifty-five, but.
Fifty-five, thank you. But you proposed a site with no research. So I know you know how to do it, excuse the assault on the wound, but that's, I think, what frustrates me the most. Mary, I couldn't, you hit that perfectly. All of these people, not all of these people, the people, I'm, a bunch of the people here, I'm sorry, not all, came to protect, not support, protect. And that's where it, you said it brought people out, wrong way to do it.
Well, it wasn't our intention to do it that way.
I, I'm gonna, I, as I started this, I, I am so, if you know me well enough, I come across as a very low key, even keel guy. Have you seen me get this riled up? I don't know, maybe just a few times, that's how frustrated I am on this. I'm not making a personal attack on you and I hope you don't take it that way. But this needed more. So what I'd like to do is open it up to the public. So I can, I would like some other people to share their thoughts, unless there's any more questions, Catherine before.
I just wanted to apologize, I, Fatima's back here, Michael Andrade's sister is here. I'll talk about the fire department, because I know a lot of people are there from there and his family as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So how we're going to do this is, as we always do, I'm going to limit comments two minutes. I'll give you a raise of hand or I'll say that you're about ten seconds left. If you're finishing your sentence, I'm not going to cut you off, but please, don't take advantage of the kindness. Finish your sentence and be done. I would also ask that if you represent a particular point of view that you think others do, maybe you can say that. And if there's a raise of hands, you don't, but I will not cut anybody off, anybody who wants to come up and speak, you are welcome to do so. So I think somebody's up here to speak already, so my goodness, all right. Here's, let me stop you and say, please state your name and address for the record and then I will give you two minutes, please, and welcome.
Mike Burns, forty-nine Wally Street, Bristol. And I'm going to take a little bit different approach to this issue. And I want to applaud the committee for realizing that State Street Dock was not a good location. And they did so very graciously. And I think they've done a lot of work on this particular issue, which is quite commendable. My, my, I guess my approach is, do we need another monument to recognize our past and how many are enough? And I, I, I see this as a symbolic feel-good action at best. I'm not sure what it does for the descendants of those people that came to the US as slaves. I, I just don't understand what it does. There's already two slavery medallion markers downtown of Bristol at the Wolf Tavern and Linden Place. And they were well done and placed in very, very nice, very appropriate ceremonies. I would recommend the, the more productive way of healing, and I'm not sure what we really need to heal, or bridging the racial gap in our state nation, is to improve the quality of education that we offer our public school students. The petitioners have a lot of energy, obviously, in terms of what they've done already. And I would think that focusing on education of those children that are in urban schools like Providence, where eight percent of the eighth grade is read at grade level, only eight percent. Now, this is a, a task that's really worth working on, I think.
Ten seconds.
I would suggest that there's a number of entities that work in black communities that really make a difference in the lives of our black brethren.
Mike, you're at two minutes.
I'm up?
That was two minutes, yes. I'm going to be fair with all, so.
All right, well, I'll, I'll, I'll let you know what those two organizations are one of these days. Thank you.
That's a nineteen fifty's cliffhanger right there, Mike. State your full name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joseph Denise, Warren, Rhode Island. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, Town Administrator. My whole speech was about your request to reject this whole thing, but since we have been pulled, I have to go a different direction a little bit. But I share the same feelings as Mary and Tony. I read those petitions and I was insulted by most of them, actually by all of them, that they refer to resonate with, with us, that tells us, okay, to believe and think about the past. I don't need somebody, okay? I don't need folks to remind me, okay, about the past. My family had nothing to do with the past. But I went to school. Tony was a teacher of mine. I learned about the history of town. I know the history of town. I never, never thought anything else. I knew that slavery came through here, I knew what slavery did. But to read those, those things, okay, from folks, it was very disheartening. And I, and I don't agree with it. And the young lady said, well, this will bring us together. All this did, all this petition did was bring all these folks together. You got fire departments, you got other folks here, military folks, okay? I represent the Bristol Veterans Council, the VFW. It brought us all together in one cause, the family. The family is here and I think the sister is going to speak a little bit, okay? Just give me a little extra time.
I can't because it would not be fair.
So, uh, it didn't bring us together. All it did was just get us more aggravated about this whole thing. Michael deserves that and I'm glad that you folks are doing something about it. Again, I thank all the folks out here who came, all the veterans, all the fire departments and all the residents that came, okay? And our original was to have you reject this whole proposal. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening to everybody, Dave Scarpino, nine thirty-two Hope Street. I came down originally because it was site specific and I had an issue with where it was going to go. I wasn't necessarily against the project, but I have to say, and I know Catherine and I know her very, very well and have a lot of respect for her and what they do. And Catherine said this would be messy and that people had to listen to each other. Maybe sometimes things they're going to hear, they don't want to hear. So I'm going to say two things, Catherine, and to the group, that please take as constructive criticism. When you refer to the people in the back as all here against the project, I don't think that's true. I don't belong to a group, I'm me. I'm here because of the venue. To assume that we're all back there because we're against the project is labeling us inappropriately. And it doesn't bring us together, it separates us. Number two, and I know Fatima's going to speak, and I know her very, very well. I'm new to town, I don't know Michael. But when you keep referring to it as a site, that's a dedicated spot to Michael's memory, who gave his life for this country. And I think it's disrespectful to refer to it as a site and not respect it for what it is. Thank you very much.
I think a lot of people here know who I am, so.
If you could state your name and address.
Sure, my name is Fatima Andrade, Milhoomans. I am Michael's sister.
Welcome.
Thank you. I've heard everyone from the Town Council explain it perfectly. Let me just say that I think it's unfair that you assume that we're all here against your project. We are not. People may feel differently about it, but I personally am not against your project. I am against at the way it was proposed of where you would like to place it. Thank you, David, for mentioning it as well. It is not, it is a memorial. Is it a place where I go to, to remember him, just like many others in Bristol? There are many beautiful places in Bristol. I am a huge history buff. I know there's many beautiful places that, I think it's also unfair that you think that Bristol is not aware, or the people of Bristol are not aware of this history. We are, I myself learned many years. I have huge honor in the Bristol history. I think there are better ways of going about it and I hope that seeing myself and others here, that you'll remember that this is not the way of doing it. And, and I appreciate every word that you all have said in my brother's memory. Continue to do so and I hope that you consider every future site thoroughly before putting it in and not make those people or families or areas of Bristol feel the way that myself, my family, and my family feel. I thank you for having us here today and for all of your comments. Good luck.
This is not a public hearing, but is there anyone else that wanted to share their thoughts?
Name is Chairman, Thomas Camara, six Brooks Farm Drive, Bristol. Just want to come up here and say that I'm a firefighter, a new Michael. I'm a combat veteran. I'm an Eagle Scout, a resident of Bristol, grew up here. Also happen to be a project manager, a construction manager for our medical school and I offer my assistance. This is not the path to go, you know, and I, I think trying to do something great, I think is representing. And this is an olive branch to say, you know, I'd love to help your cause and go about it the right way. And not that you're doing the wrong thing, but approach it in maybe a better way and I'd like to help.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Good evening, Rich Falcone, ten Wendy Drive, Bristol. I'm new to this town, I've been here since seventy-three, so I'm not a townie. All right.
Keep working on it, keep working on it.
By many a townie. And one of them are many of the retread towns, those will come back. Taking my time, I just want to say that this committee's requirements or intentions have already, have already been met. And you can tell that because we already have the two markers, Linden Place and at the Wolf. Again, Mike said that they're, they're nice markers. And on top of that, Linden Place is conducting the slavery education and the tours, I haven't taken it. I probably will, but I knew all about the town's history when I moved here and I've learned about it and I'm accepting it. I'm not a white privileged person. I grew up in Brooklyn with many ethnicities and never had a problem. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Isaac Giliard and I'm a, I guess, part-time resident here. I'm actually at nursing school right now in Massachusetts, so I'm in and out.
Could you add your address?
It's three eighty-five High Street.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I am the chair of the Senate Voices in Action and I placed a letter in the Bristol's Phoenix two weeks ago, week ago, in response to Steve Bridges' letter asking for the site and bringing this issue to the council. As I sit here, I'm not going to re-read, go through that because everyone has read it. I had my concerns about it, but what I really am listening to, it's kind of disheartening and it's a little bit heartbreaking. And this is why it's hard to get descendants to come forward, is that there's already a thought that we are doing this to make people feel bad, but we're not. We're doing this to disrespect someone, but we're not. We're doing this so that we can talk about ourselves, so we can make note of ourselves. We don't have that space here. The markers that you're talking about were done by people who, well-meaning, but don't provide a voice to us. That's what's at the core of this. That's why when I started with the project, I left it because I didn't see that. And it's not about Bristol really. Bristol is a part of it, the Wolves are a part of it. It's about slavery, but it's also about being able to look at ourselves in the eye and tell our children, the people who are going to come behind us, that we left something for you to look at that is representative of you, that we're telling that story. Moving forward for all of us, because there's a lot of people have said a lot of things that are typical of what, I accept this. Why do you have to accept it? Black people have been here since well before a majority of the people that live here now. You don't have to accept it, we were here when you got here, we'll probably be here when you go. As it goes for a lot of people, but that's the issue, why do you have to accept it? It is, and they're facts. You may not like it or you might have a different opinion of it, but they're the facts. Now, I'm not going to address the Andre thing because I don't even think they should be on the same page. One is not the other. Okay, and it shouldn't even be, I, that's, I don't even know why, it, it's just nothing to discuss. And the other part about this is I love Catherine and I love all the people that are there, but the problem is, is that you put this now into sort of a bad light. And so again, this is why African-Americans and indigenous people don't want to get involved. This is why our story is not being told, because we pull back every single time something like this starts, because it gets off to a bad start. And so here I am, sitting in this room like, well, what are we going to do? You've put a ton of bricks on top of us now, because now you're telling us that people have said all these things that makes us feel like we have to dig out from underneath all of this bad stuff, that we've engendered all of this bad feeling and that's not where we want to do. And so I'm, I had a lot of other things I wanted to say, but listening to the comments here, we're already starting under, at minus. We're not even at level here, we're not at zero. And our best bet was to come and be at zero and we're not there. And that's because of some mistakes that were made and approaches that were, things were approached in the wrong way. I, I agree that we're not ready to ask for anything. No one's ready to ask for anything because we have not done the work. It's not done. And there's a whole lot of other stuff that is involved in this process. And I have some books there for you, I can put together for you with some information that you can look at and read about sites of heritage and sites of memory and his, and heritage tourism and things like that, that go in, that go, are, that work in conjunction with sites of memory. So for me, this has been incredibly disappointing. Because I worked with Catherine, I worked with a lot of people and there are a lot of people who are probably not here, might be on Zoom, that put a lot of work into this. Spent hours and hours and hours crawling through records, crawling through deeds, crawling through wills to get information.
I need you to finish up, I gave you extra time, because I thought it was quite appropriate to hear.
So.
But you need to.
Yeah, but I think those people have not been treated fairly in this. Yes.
Could I save my two minutes to answer?
Okay. So, so in, in that, in that regard, I think, I think that I feel like this has just been, I mean, I've been working on this for almost three years now. I feel like at this point, I'm going to have, we're going to have a very difficult time, no matter what we do, to bring this to fruition. And I feel bad for all the people who look like me and the people who live in Bristol, I do.
Thank you.
Aries Maderis, Bristol, Rhode Island. Unfortunately, I, I, I feel that you misspoke. I think there are people here in this room who are in support of what's going on here. I was very taken back by the list of names or lack of names that are here on the ground. We all agree and I applaud the council in recognizing that the location is incorrect. But sir, we're all speaking the same language. We're all pretty much agreeing that this is, we're acknowledging our past. I think there's nothing, I don't think anything that was said here today is negating the fact that this is our past. We acknowledge that.
I ask that you address the council, please.
I'm sorry, sir, sorry. So I feel that our voices in the back are merely just saying what you guys have reiterated. The location was poor. Mrs. Perella. Chairman Claro, you're correct. The information that they obtained is amazing. Again, I'm taken back by it, but the location is incorrect. And I feel that we support the actual ideology behind of recognizing history and where we came from as a town and how do we move forward? There's two points in this line, a beginning and an end. I would like to see two points of reflection. Where we started, which is dark, and where we finished and where hopefully we can reflect on the better parts of America and where we came as. on the better parts of America and where we came as Americans here. Okay, we have, yes, I was most likely taught by Mr. Techsera as well as mess, as well as probably ninety percent of the people here today. Okay, um, he's been teaching or was a teacher for forty, fifty, sixty, seventy years. But I digress. Right, but the whole point is I think we're all here speaking the same language. We want to recognize our, our heritage and our history. It may be dark, but unfortunately, at the end of the darkness comes light, and I think we have that here in this linear, in this linear effect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Travers, four seven four Hope Street here in beautiful Bristol, Rhode Island. I'm, I'm here speaking on behalf of Friends of Historic Bristol. And Friends of Historic Bristol, we really do appreciate all, all the, the, the support and, and the work for the port marker. I just think the site's wrong. It's too premature to have even come to the council. Back in February of twenty twenty-one, Mary had alluded to the seminar or webinar put together by the International Coalition of Sites of Conscious. And it was attended by just about every one of the organizations here in Bristol. It was fabulous. Sites of Conscious, conscience, excuse me, the leader in addressing these port marker projects throughout the world told the participants that establishing a port marker requires thoughtful, logical approach toward, you know, to deal with Bristol's history, but really lay the groundwork for a project that Bristol citizens can be proud of. Before moving forward, our recommendation, our hope is what I think you've, you've so eloquently all said, that, you know, let, let's, let's hold off. I think what we want to do is put a broad coalition together of all the interested parties and, you know, put together a plan or use the plan that's already existed. In, in Esco was mentioned. That, that's an international program. What that international exposure can do for the town of Bristol is going to be pretty good, both on the economic side, as well as just, you know, the, the knowledge that we can put together from that. So I just want to say thank you, guys. You, you, you guys are so insightful. Thank you for everybody putting this together, and thank you for all the support from you guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Lorraine Russell, and I'm at thirty-four Riley Drive in Riverside, Rhode Island.
Welcome.
Good night. Hello. I'm a board member of Senate Voices in Action. I am a descendant of the enslaved in Bristol and also of enslaved Native Americans in Rhode Island. I first heard of the marker project about three years ago when we started a DVA, but have never been involved in the planning of it. And I think that was one of the problems that our organization had with it, with it, was that, yes, it's a hard history. It's a hard history being a descendant of someone who was considered chattel. It's a hard history because it's, it's hard to find a descendant linked to a specific person who was enslaved. So when you know that you have people who exist and not have their voices in something, the planning of something like this, especially with the disaster, with the choice of the location. I just think we all need to take a step back and look at this process. I'm not against the project, but I just think we need to be more thoughtful about the whole process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Bridgeman, longtime resident here.
Could you state your address for the record, please?
Ninety-three Highland Road.
Thank you.
I want to say that it was very presumptuous of, presumptuous of us to propose that site. I want to apologize to Fatima and to the brothers of Michael. If at any point we thought that was going to be offensive, we never would have taken it further. So it was a mistake. That's part of the messiness, I guess, Tony, that is part of this process. It gets messy when personal attacks occur on people. I, I've, I've had it before and I, I can take it. I'm not going to respond to that way. But it is, it is part of a, a process. We keep hearing about that. And our intention is to celebrate, to celebrate the heritage of the people of African descent and the people of indigenous backgrounds who were here, who were part of our culture. And that's what we want to market with. It is different than the medallions. My old gym buddy, Rich, are you still here? He made mention of the medallions. We're very happy to see them on Linden Place and DeWolf because activity, events did occur at those places, as we all know. I don't need to repeat that. But this marker is something, it's very special. A gesture of peace, a gesture of healing, and we want to embrace people like Lori and Isaac, and, and Mary Ann made that very clear to me very recently. So, yeah, it is messy because we're, we've stumbled a bit. We want to regroup. We're going to come back. I would ask if anything tonight that you would make a gesture of confidence that, that this is a worthy project, a worthy project that should be pursued. And that's what I would ask of you. So my apologies to all the gentlemen and ladies for any offense that occurred. It was naivete, and I'm sorry. We'll go forward from here. Thank you. Thank you, members of the council.
Good evening. I'm Linda Aruda. I'm at one fifty-nine High Street, and I haven't been to a town council meeting live in a very long time. I'm going to hearken back to, I think, everyone here, maybe with the exception of Tim and Aaron, would remember, and the people sitting at this table would remember that we had a woman come back to her native town in the nineties and could see that everybody was not talking to each other. So she convened a thing that was called Voices for Bristol. And here's where I think, when you look in the archives, you can go back to Voices in Bristol and look how that was organized. I attended that, and a few years later, I attended a second roundtable. And I'm going to pull the Spanish on you right here, because I've sat here and listened. I read opinions that I see in print. And in Spanish, there were two words, and it relates to voices. Mr. Techsera should know this. When you say to someone, escuche, escuche por favor, listen, listen. I'm telling you, kid, don't do that. Get up. That's one voice. But there's a second verb that is entender. So when you say escuche, escuche, listen, listen, entender means that you're going to hear because that hearing will lead to understanding. And I think that needs to happen again, that these voices need to be expressed, need to be heard because.
You need to finish up. It's been two minutes.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to finish. They, that needs to happen. And I, I really hope that those voices are going to come together. They're going to present, they're going to argue, but they're going to entender to understand what this really means. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, council.
We've talked about a lot of things. What's this council's play?
I would make a motion to receive and file for, you know, in, allow the folks to come back.
Is there a second? Discussion?
So, Mr. Chairman, kind of, from what I heard today, kind of, some of my thoughts were, as I was listening to what everybody was saying, is that there could be the possibility of sending some of these folks back to the table, but I, I think that there might be some benefit to sending them back to have some more discussion and giving them a little bit of instruction as to what we want to hear next. I've heard from kind of both sides, or not both sides. I, I think it was very clear that the memory of Michael, this was not the place for this. There were some folks who were here to support Michael and, and that they sounded like they wanted to be part of the process. So for me, I think there might be some benefit to saying something along the lines of we would like you to go back to the table, and we would like you to have a public discussion about this and find some way of doing this. And as you're doing so, that process should end with a resolution that you can bring to us that has thoroughly researched the site for a historical marker that everybody can agree the meaning of. So i- if there, I mean, i- if there would be some, I, I think what would happen with that is that it would cut me because Tony to have to maybe amend his to add on that additional instruction. Uh, so I, I'm just curious to hear what others might think about that. That, that's, that's what I could support right now. I think it is something that has some instruction to the folks that are here.
I think that I would, I mean, I would agree with that, Aaron, in the sense that I think everybody who's up here who's commented, we've all are open to the project, you know, and it's just kind of, we're open to it, but I think it really needs to have the descendants and the voices front and center. It needs to be, they should be driving the project, and in my, in my opinion. And so I, I think that this should have, you know, I guess it's probably good that it came now, but because you got to hear the concerns, but I really do think that this wasn't ready to be brought to us. There were too many issues out there that just sort of weren't necessarily in the, it wasn't thought through enough to come to the council. So I think you need to kind of go back to the drawing board and, and think it through, but also to make sure that all the parties are there. I mean, it doesn't really do any, to me, it doesn't really serve any purpose to have a monument that, you know, ignores the descendants and is driven by white people in Bristol. It, it just doesn't seem to me to be the best way to do it, but if the point is to have the history heard, then that's what it should be. But I, I think it needs to come back to us. I don't think we could even, I'm not even sure. I got to check with the solicitor, but I mean, I don't even think we should, even if we could, I don't even think we could do, if we wanted to. I don't think we could do a resolution today because it's not really in front of us. There's nothing there. So I think that there's some work to be done, and I think we're all open to, you know, I'm happy to talk to anybody about Michael. It's a bit, you probably, all of you are, and you know, anticipated possible. I mean, we're going into our budget stuff. I'm kind of going through a very busy time of year, but you know, that's my view. I mean, I, I think that's a good way to, to approach it. We're all open to it, but if the work is on all of you to come back with a plan that encompasses everything and everyone.
And I think it's clear that we're going to keep Michael Andrade's site sacred to, to him and his memory. And from this dialogue, that, that's definitely clear. I would love the group to go back, revisit the concept stage, come up with some milestones, very clear milestones, and with some clear communication in regards to those milestones, each step of the way. That way, we don't get into this so-called messy situation where it's on the agenda, where it's not really ready for primetime.
So I, I think that we could receive and file. I don't think we need to change the motion. I think these words go with it. Additional to vetting the, the site, but also coming to this council with a clear presentation, a clear idea of what you're looking to erect. That's what's being presented in front of us. I know that there's a lot of backstory, important backstory, but though the, what's the request in front of the council is where and what? And neither one of those things are here yet, but that's what you need to come back with. So I would say a receivable file with those words. The wonderful thing about technology is you get to watch horrible meetings again and again and again. So we'll all be able to go back and watch your favorite points or lack thereof and make your, you know, take those words out and, and, and hear the concerns that on both sides and come back to this council with a, a clear proposal. And we've all said it, we're saying again, I don't hear opposition from this council about the project itself. That is, that is key words to take away, but it needs to be ready for frontline. Tim used that term with me earlier. So that's perfect. Ready for frontline, at least ninety percent.
Primetime.
So unless there's other dialogue, we have a motion and a second to receive and file with those words.
And also just for, for the clerk, you know, I just want to be on the record that I would prefer to have the group out there to identify a site for a historical marker that is thoroughly researched and developed. It has to be ready to go.
Perfect. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for all of your words and your efforts and your time.
Thank you.
We're going to take two minutes because all of this moving around will keep us on doing it, but just two minutes, please don't leave your seat. If you're here, you. Two minutes. Oh, you need to go to the bathroom. Two minutes.
All right, everyone. We're going to get going again, please. If you're sitting in first class, if you come back to your seat, we'd appreciate it. All right, madam, madam clerk, if you would.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F three, and this is the Audubon Society of Rhode Island's request to install a crosswalk on Route one fourteen Hope Street. on Route 114 Hope Street.
Hi, yeah.
I'd ask for quiet, everyone, please. Thank you.
This is a long, this issue's been around for a long time in regards to the Bristol residents, the Audubon and the Audubon Society proposing a single crosswalk to be installed on Route 114 at the entrance of the Audubon Nature Center and directly across from Elmwood.
Everyone, I'd ask for quiet. We had quieted during that conversation. It's important to move forward with business. Thank you. Continue, please.
Yeah, Chairman and colleagues, I just wanted to put this agenda item on here in regards to a crosswalk request from the Audubon Society to Elmwood Avenue. It's continuously gotten that 114 has gotten very hazardous in regards to traffic. And it's been, you know, some difficulty crossing the road. There's been buses stop, the ripped a bus to stop there directly across from the Audubon, but people have trouble crossing because there's no crosswalks. So I would love to propose that we refer this to the town administrator and the police chief to review the traffic study on this, but I know that Anne Demonti, a Bristol resident and a director of the Audubon Society is here to kind of would like to say a couple of words, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. I know you've had a long night, so I appreciate. Thank you. Yes, my name's Anne Demonti. I live at 1403 Hope Street. Thank you. I actually live on the Audubon Society property, which is technically 1401 Hope Street. We've had, during the pandemic, we saw a huge increase in people walking our property, which is wonderful. That's what we're there for. Many people cross our property to get to the East Bay bike path. We are the only real access to the bike path in this area. You either have to go down Cold State Park or go down into Warren. So a lot of people cross 114 to come across our property to get to the East Bay bike path. And this was a huge increase during COVID, which was wonderful because we were one of the first only places people could get out and walk, especially after Cold State Park was closed. But that continued, which is fantastic, but what we've been watching is Bristol residents and sometimes Warren residents playing chicken with the traffic on 114, dodging traffic to try to cross. And it's been getting a little hazardous and really what brought this even more so to my attention is we had a volunteer who over the summer was tending the gardens at our entrance and he's from Barrington and was watching this happen. And he came to me one day and he said, Anne, this is an accident waiting to happen. And with that said, we've had several accidents, car accidents, not people accidents, pedestrian accidents at that entrance between people coming in and out of Elm Street, which was right across from our, our driveway. So I think it's something that does need attention. I'm afraid that someday, God forbid, someone is going to get hurt crossing that way. Also, as Councilman Sweeney said, there is a ripped a bus stop right at that entrance. So people cross 114 to get to the bus stop. So I think a crosswalk would help. I've spoken to Rhode Island DOT about this. They of course said to speak to you, so I have. And I've also spoken to Representative Donovan about this and she, she's on board with it as well. So that's where we stand. I'm happy to answer any questions.
You covered it well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. If my colleagues are in agreement, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the town administrator and the chief of police to review the traffic study and, and take the next steps with the Rhode Island DOT.
Second.
There's a motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to refer to the administrator and the police chief. To, is the traffic studies in process right now with the State Traffic Commission? Is that correct? Or it is being proposed to be done? I understand. Okay, all right.
No, there is, there is a communication from them that they initiated it and I, I did forward.
You forwarded it to. It's in, it's in the works, actually. So.
So there was a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F4, and this, this is Michael Balzano of 155 Bradford Street, Department C. And this is a request for accessible parking space and this is first reading.
What's this council's play?
Yes, and request.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to approve first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F5, and this is Christie Legari of 229 State Street, Department 1. And this is a request with no parking space on Ryan Avenue.
I was just gonna say, based on the recommendations, I would recommend we deny the request.
Second.
There's a motion to deny made by Tony, seconded by Tim. Discussion?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Council. I'm Kristen Legary of 229 State Street, Department 1. My mother, Elizabeth Legary, we live together. Thank you. We are the blue house on the corner of State and Ryan, and the biggest problem that has been happening since Deambra redid the road on Ryan, they didn't paint the no parking boxes back where they originally were. And Mr. Contenti did explain to me how that was initially not in the town, the original town ordinance, if I have that correct. But living there, the problem is I call it double parking, but it's, the cars are parking bumper to bumper right on the corner of Ryan and State to our driveway. So the biggest problem since Deambra redid the construction is turning onto Ryan for all of the neighbors. I was actually gonna do a petition with my neighbors, but it's been hard to catch everybody. Everybody's up in arms about it around us on the corner of State and Ryan. So we were looking to get that no parking box put back, the one that's originally at that corner of Ryan and State. It's not so much about our driveway. Yes, there's issues getting in and out of the driveway, but I understand that the, some of the police guys showed up and took pictures and did a video and whatnot of getting in and out of the driveway, but the biggest problem is turning onto Ryan Street when it's all bumper to bumper.
You have to go up when you're taking a right onto Ryan.
Could you, I'm sorry, did we get your name on?
This is my mom. I'm Elizabeth Legary, my daughter Kristen, 229 State Street.
Thank you, well.
Thank you. And we've only been here for four years, so Bristol's new to us. We're still learning and loving the people here.
We won't hold that against you.
I mean, and unfortunately, we have a woman who lives above us and the police and rescue have been sent to the house more than I think it's ever happened.
At least six times in the last two and a half months.
They have not, the rescue can't make the turn. You, when you're turning right onto Ryan, you literally have to go up on the curb if there's two cars pop there or the one on the corner. So that spot is, is a big protection that's been taken away. And I just wish it would be readdressed. I really do.
Not everybody has the common sense, I guess, to understand that you have to park 15 feet from the curb. I was told by, is it Officer Lieutenant Ross, Wasny?
Lieutenant what?
Wasny I spoke to on the phone. And it was basically like he wants me to babysit that corner and just call and say, hey, can you come out here and tag this person? They're within 15 feet of the curb. I'm not a babysitter for the curb, but it's, we work crazy hours. So with Roger Williams, there's a lot of Roger William houses in that area. So we've got a lot of college kids that are parking all wonky. So and Kinsman from the bar. So we were just looking to get that no parking box put back on the corner.
So a couple of things. First is you're right. You, you mentioned that the administrator talked to you about what was actually non-ordinance. Said another way, there was parking, no parking spots on that road and other roads. You probably heard this council talk about this recently. A lot of cleaning up, making ordinances for the appropriate ones, removing them when they were not found, but they didn't have an ordinance behind them. One of the wonderful things about having the upgraded technology recently is we have though you, you mentioned the video and pictures and anything like this, we like to, especially on a denial, we like to have something for the council to look at. Could you play that video of the because that'll help us, because we can picture it in our head.
I think the video is more of our driveway.
I think it is because that's what they.
It's that corner right there.
Making the turn. And usually people park right at the corner, right at the crosswalk is where they usually park.
The corner of our fence.
I was gonna ask if there's a no parking sign.
There was. No, there's no parking sign. There just used to be the box. And my question is, Second Street directly across from us, it's a wider street. Lynch redid that road and they put the boxes back. And I was wondering if that was initially in the town ordinance.
Yeah, so the petition shows the no parking like in the center between State Street and, and the driveway. So that it, it, it appears and hear me out, it appears that you're requesting no parking in that entire area. But certainly in the springtime, when we redo the restriping, that's, that's not required by ordinance, the 15 feet from the corner. I think that we had talked about that.
Right, but.
So in the springtime, we can do the striping from the corner. That would help negotiate, but the driveway issue.
So we're hearing you right. If we look at the video, the stop video right now, so behind the, the
The bumper.
The bumper.
To the road.
We can, we can stripe that area to make sure that that is clearly.
Yeah, it was probably my drawing that was most concerned. I do apologize for that. I'm not the greatest in that.
We won't take any points off for scale.
Sorry.
So what, I, I need some clarity. All of this makes sense, I think, to all of us. What actions, if any, do we need to make?
I would perhaps that motion be made to have the.
To deny the petition, but to, to put, I don't know.
Ask the, ask the administration and DPW to paint the no parking box 15 feet from the corner.
Everybody okay with that? I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. There was a motion and a second to deny. I apologize. So can you withdraw?
Okay, well, we're still gonna deny it, but request.
Thank you for making.
Request the administration to, to still stripe the, the area though, correct?
To stripe the area from the corner 15 feet as per all.
Right.
Right. So we had a motion with that. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Is there a discussion? Yes.
Just the, we don't do the striping till the, the weather warms up. So it's gonna, it's gonna be a little bit. Hopefully sooner than later.
I just have what I have to call the police department at like every time there's a car.
Sorry, you're gonna continue to babysit that corner until the line's.
Sorry. I do have one other question. It has to do with this. If we can get the striping, that would be a blessing and people won't get hurt. Can we erect the sign to say?
No, because it's part of the general ordinance that you don't have any signs on any, well, I should say any. Then I'll tell you what, I'm.
I think it's funny.
I, I, this is another item we talked about in the area was sidewalk plowing, and I did some research and the equipment has trouble in that area. We're trying to get them to invest them into some narrower equipment because we would like to do the sidewalks. I just, if we could do without a sign in a pole, I would rather do without. Let's see how it goes with the striping.
Just a good emotion in a second, and that was exactly what I was just gonna say. Let's give it some time. Let's see, let's check its efficacy. And if it turns out great, then enough said. And if it isn't, then we can have another discussion.
Thank you. I'm sorry to bother you. With having to go up on this damn curb and then come down and.
And Deambra did hit a car when this was all happening. So that's why I really, we gotta get this box back.
So everyone's clear with the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Have a good night now.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G1. These are the public service appointments. The first one is for the recreation board. We have two terms to expire February 2025. We have Carl Antonovich with interest in reappointment, and we also have and Diane Davis also with interest in reappointment.
Motion to reappoint both?
It would help if I turned it on. I make a motion that we reappoint both candidates.
We have a motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to reappoint both candidates. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G2, and this is for the Board of Fire Engineers with the terms to expire March 2023, and we have the recommendation of the slate of candidates from the fire chief.
Based on the recommendation of the fire chief, I move that we approve it. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is G3, and this is the Harbor Commission. These have two terms to expire March of 2025. We have David F. Miller with interest in reappointment, and we also have Stephen Genario also with interest in reappointment.
Motion to reappoint David Miller and Stephen Genario.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to reappoint. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed?
Next item is G4, and this is the zoning board of review with the term to expire March 2027, and we have Tony and Broom with interest in reappointment.
I make a motion that we approve the reappointment.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to reappoint. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G5, and this is the Bristol County Water Authority term to expire February 2025, and we have Georgina McDonald with interest in reappointment.
Sure. Motion to reappoint Georgina McDonald.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary to reappoint. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the last public service appointment is the Bristol Christmas Festival, and this is with an additional new member with terms to expire October 2020. And we have Erica Pennavest in a recommendation from the Michael Riley, the chairman from the Christmas Festival Committee.
Based on the recommendation of the, the chairman of the committee, I move that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to reappoint. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is the place where we say thank you, and we're saying thank you to every board and commission member and the time and effort. No, I'm serious, right? And I know you're shaking your heads because you agree and you're smiling. So, because I know it's, this is a reaffirming affirmative affirmation. So last word was made up. We very much, seriously, we very much appreciate the time, effort and energy that goes into, the amount of dialogue that we had this evening about this item shows the, the willingness to be part of the community. And I got to tell you something. There are other communities that beg for volunteerism, and we have it in spades and all of us mentioned the fire department as, as being volunteer. I don't often think of them when we think of boards and commissions because they're not a board and commission. There's certainly extremely important volunteers in the community. So thank you from this council and from the town.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I1, and this is development director Diane Williamson with a request to the State Traffic Commission for a left turn lane on Route 114 at the entrance of, to the Bristol Shopping Center.
And you've stayed here all night just for this? Is that right? Okay. It's not just, it's important.
So you have my memo, the DOT received a request from the property owners, but it does need to come from the council for the left turn lane request. I submitted a memorandum with the corridor study that was done in 2017, and at that time, the DOT believed that the presence of the rumble strip was actually creating a little bit of a, of a problem for motorists that were traveling southbound wanting to turn left into the plaza because the rumble strip kind of keeps cars from going over as far left as they should go, and then other cars who want to keep traveling south can't go past that.
Could you give clarity to the public? Where are we speaking of? We know where you're speaking of.
Yes. So this is the driveway into Gooding Realty, just south of, I'm sorry, the Bristol Shopping Center. Just south of Gooding Avenue.
So if you are driving south on Hope Street, go through the set of lights at Gooding and you would take, it would be that left-hand turn that you currently really feel like you're not supposed to do.
Exactly. Just pass the, just pass the bank of Newport. No, you can, you can turn left, but there's a rumble strip there. And it, so there's a perception that you can't, and then if you do want to turn left, you don't, you can't, you can't get out of the lane of travel so that southbound traffic stops behind you. So at the time when the DOT looked. So at the time when the DOT looked at this in twenty seventeen, that's what they recommended, that the rumble strip be removed. And that there'd be a dedicated left turn lane on the street into that.
Why would they just not make the turn at Gooding and go in?
I don't know.
It'd be coming from that direction. It'd be so much easier. There's a turn light there, I think.
It might just be a matter of, because you'd have to go left on Gooding and then right into the plaza, whereas you could just make one left into the plaza. I guess it's just a preference.
Accessibility.
So if you are in support, this would be a recommendation or a request to you, from you to the DOT for the.
In keeping with the two thousand seventeen study that was done, I'm not aware, Chief, are you aware of any concerns over there in regards to higher than normal traffic, sorry, accidents or anything like that?
Us did not see, you know, a problem, sends the DOT, but it's an appropriate request.
So I make a motion that we forward this to the, was it the State Traffic Commission? Yes.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to forward to the State Traffic Commission with our blessing.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just have a quick question for Diane. Presumably, these cars will be going into the Gooding Plaza parking lot. What's the status on the greening of the parking lot over there? Are they, will they be? Starting work on any of that kind of stuff soon, you know?
I don't have plans for that yet.
Okay.
They're working on, I think they're trying to come back with some plans to the planning board, but nothing's been submitted yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I2, and we have Harbor Master Marcelli in regards to the Bristol Harbor fee updates.
Hello, Greg. Good evening. I thought everybody was sticking around for my presentation, but I guess they all left.
It happens to us all the time.
Not used to it. I sent a memo in, gonna adjust some fees for the upcoming year, new changes to the docks. The first one is, we never had, a few years ago, we, we established fees for utilities, so power, water, but people stayed with us. We never had two hundred ampere power. We'll, we'll have that this spring. So looking around the rates around different places and stuff, fifty dollars a night seemed to be the going rate for two hundred amps of power. So that's the big boats that are drawing that the hundred foot plus boats, ACs, refrigerators, fryolaters, all that crazy stuff. You know, so your RV, your house, your vacation home on the water. So that's an appropriate amount to charge.
And this is in keeping with, with other marinas?
With other marinas. We already have for, for thirty amps of power, fifty ampere, a hundred ampere. We just don't have one for two hundred ampere. The second one, you know, we, we're, we're, we are not paying with the taxpayers' money to, to build the marina. We're, we're charging the, the right rates to do that, but, you know, we do have a lot of transient space at the marina, talking to the town administrator. We kind of thought it was a good idea to, to offer a discounted rate to the Bristol residents for when they want, if they want to come, take a, take a dock space overnight. We, whatever to use. We have such an extensive list of residents. We're up to about a hundred and seventy nine. So every time we, we get in the paper, we get on TV, we get ten, fifteen more applications for the dock. So I just thought it was something that we could do for the residents of town that wanted to, to get a discounted transient rate. We do it for hourly rate now. It's five dollars an hour, but if they want to spend a couple nights, I thought two dollars a, a foot, which is half price of what we charge everybody not from town. And we would check that with the boat registration, driver's license. It wouldn't just be, yeah, well, a Bristol resident, no, let me see your boat registration. Any questions?
So far, no.
Okay. There's two parts to the next one. One, now with the fuel dock, we, we coming open here as soon as the state comes down and certifies that we're pumping a gallon of fuel. Still waiting on that. I've been told it's gonna be next week, but. Called around marinas, talked to different folks. There's a, there's an upcharge on the water between seventy five cents and a dollar per gallon. So right now, we set the pumps out when I was learning how to operate them. We said it's at seventy five cents more than what we paid for the fuel. Talking to Solicitor's Office, we need to get a fees, approval from you guys to, to do that. So seventy five cents to a dollar, that'll keep us in range with everybody else. I don't wanna, I don't wanna be the lowest guy and, and undercut other businesses that are established. So we can have a range. We will be able to do that to set those prices. And that, and you can't set a price because the wholesale price on diesel was three sixty seven last week. This week it's four thirty. So we, we need to have some flexibility at the office to, to set those.
Ukrainian issues.
Yeah, I mean, you name it. They're, they're there. So, and then the, the last thing would be to do, to offer another, you know, feel-good five percent discount for Bristol residents for, for buying fuel from us at the, at the dock. And we would check that with the boat registration, driver's license.
Seems all very appropriate.
Yeah, and not difficult for us to do. We, we have the system we have in place to take money in credit cards. Just hit the five percent discount button, it'll take the money off.
So it's that simple? Just hit a button?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, it's not. You didn't teach any of these kids that are working for me, Tony, but. See, he didn't think I was paying attention in the back.
I, I love Matt. Yeah, in social studies.
What's this council's budget? Am I approving this, Mr. Solicitor? Is that the, is that the correct? Authorizing?
Approve the fees.
Yeah, we're approving the. Motion to pre, approve the fee updates.
You're approving the changes to the fee schedule. We have it as a fee schedule, so you don't have to do it as an ordinance each time.
Right.
Perfect. So.
Mary, was that? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion made by Mary, seconded by Tim to approve these fee changes. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere.
You guys don't see me much, but you got me all night.
Three, we have Harbor Master Marcelli in regards to the Bristol waterfront improvements. And we have a presentation from the Church Street Marina Extension in pure.
I'm just gonna give a, a quick overview. If you got questions along the way, just, just yell out and we'll, we'll go there. I'm gonna point it at Chris. He's gonna change pictures, so go ahead, Chris. You've, you've all seen this, seventy nine new slips, fifty for Bristol residents, twenty nine for transients. Go ahead, Chris. Let's go to the pictures.
Just one minute.
Just, just one minute. You actually have twen, a space for twenty nine transients?
Yes, sir.
Awesome.
Yes. It's gonna be great.
Okay.
So this is just a old rendering. You guys seen this a hundred times. Go ahead, Chris. This, this is, this is what you, this is, this is what I wanted you guys to see. When we were talking about the Capitol meeting. This is, this is the technology we have down there. Go ahead, go to the next picture. So these are, these were our docks actually taking drone footage over in Sweden where they built them on the dock. You can, you can see six in the picture, but I, look at the, the reference of it is the truck in the background. We all know how big that is. So these things don't look that large when you go down to the waterfront to see them, but when you put in a reference to that truck, they, these things are huge. Go ahead, Chris. So these are just, they're all done production, get ready to ship. You can skip through them, Chris, unless somebody's got questions.
If you do it fast enough, it turns into a movie. I don't know.
So the, right now, we have eleven out of the twelve in place. The twelfth one will be done next week. Once we finish the demo of the old wave attenuator. We've been in the water now. I mean, concrete floats, that's the biggest thing I get. People don't understand that you can actually make concrete float by putting flotation inside of it.
Greg, feedback I've gotten so far is old salts. People that really know the water will go out in clear amazement on the wave attenuation. It's, it's impressive. Everything that was designed, all the efforts that this council approved. The efforts that you've done in all of this, Mr. Administrator, it's working.
Yeah.
It is, is just tremendous.
All you gotta do is go down.
We're in tough wind right now. I know it's gonna flip around in the spring, but it's, it's, it's impressive.
The, the northwest, we're never gonna block, but that southwest wave action, we're gonna take out. This is just the ship that brought them over. You can go, Chris.
Where, where do they drop them off?
This is right off of, well, Safe Harbors Marina. Now it's Anchorage Oscar down off of Portsmouth. And then, then Regan Marine Construction, who we've hired to build the marina, they, they transferred them up. So this is in the beginning, everybody, there, there was steel piles in the water. That was just the mark, the beginning of of the marina construction when we were doing that. And they're just pulled out. So hold it here, Chris. So this is, this is the neat technology you're never gonna see. And this is what I said earlier, excites me. This is a C flex system. It's the largest system C flex has ever made. They, they built it for like thirty, forty percent over capacity. But you have the nylon ring, you got webbing into all stainless steel. And you have sixteen bands per mooring system. And then that's the black ones. They're about an inch and a half, inch and three quarters in, in circumference. And then the yellow ones are, I refer to them as tattletales, that only let the black band stretch to eighty percent of their length. And that'll stop it. And what that'll do is, at that point, we're talking, you know, Hurricane thirty eight type weather. And the, the dock will actually just suspend under the water. And we got bigger problems because, you know, water's up on Hope Street. So, and then they get hooked through. And you go to the next picture.
Can you explain what this is, what it does again?
So what, what it does, you wanna go back one, Chris? The, the black bands, as the tide, when they tension these, and there's a picture of how they tension them in a minute. But when they, when they, when they tension this through the dock, they tension it at a specific length to what the tide is at that moment. So if it was low, low tide, zero, it would be right at zero when they tensioned it on their formula. And what happens is the black bands will stretch to high tide and shrink when it goes down to low tide.
Where is it? Where is it? Where is it?
Oh, it's under the water. Oh, it's under the water. Yeah, we're, I'll show you in a second. You can go to the next one. So this is just how they attach it to the, to the sixteen ton blocks, thirty two thousand pounds. There's a few left down there that they have to finish up next week with the, with the last piece. Go ahead, Chris. Go to the next one. So here's the mooring system all set up. They lower it into the ground. You'll see that the, the mooring's on the other side. When they, that gets spun and sits down the bottom. And at the pointy, pointy part where the mooring attached to goes back to the dock. What's neat is, you go to the next one.
Greg, do those beds have a lifespan like, is it gonna be part of our maintenance plan?
They've been in existence twenty five plus years and they haven't had any problems. So there, there's, we're gonna do annual inspections for about three to four years. And then we'll see if there's wear points and then we'll, we'll adjust quartering on our inspections.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about maintenance.
Yeah. So that's just the hole in the bottom of the dock that the, the line goes up through. So, so you have that line that comes up through the dock, and that's, and this is how we end up tensioning the, this whole system. And that's all done by the crane. Go to the next one. And that, just that little piece of hardware is what holds it in, in the, in the pocket. And there's a little pin that goes on top, and it just gets an overhand knot and stuffed in the hole. But we had the C flex engineers on hand for the first five days with Regan. And that's just, they're just tensioning it there. And so they, they certified everything. So this is what you'll see, and, and this is what's, what's, this is the only part you'll ever see as far as the mooring system. So this is on the east end of the dock between the end of the dock and, and the Robin Rug complex. So the water's so shallow there that we're always gonna be able to take a look at this one and, and see it. And we're gonna put, we're gonna put buoys around like a swim area, so no one decides to drive through there. But you get the, both, the lines come down, they, they come from the opposite side of the dock. And then out about thirty five to forty feet from the dock. So they drop down about seven feet right away. And, and go out, but since the water's shallow, there's seven, eight feet of water there, that low tide that you get to see this. There's a piece of PVC pipe. You can kind of make it out in a picture, and that's set on every one where there's any chafe area. So you can't chafe on that line. But you, once the docks enter, you wanna take a bow ride out there, I can take you out, and then you can see it now. You go to the next one, Chris. Every, every joint, depending what it is, has rubber in between it, and then there's seven, eight bands that, that hold it together. Go ahead. So this picture I took this morning, so you guys didn't see this one yet. So this is standing in that over where we were just looking at the, at the mooring system. We had a northwest wind this morning, so you had a little bit of chop inside of there. And if you look out to the west, you'll see my boat over there. And so that's kind of how expansive it is. Never thought we'd be to this point, standing out in the middle of the harbor. But it's, it's a very large marina. You can go to the next one. That's standing on top of the building today. You can see, you see where the crane's at now, the big crane in the water. That, that's where they're at as far as taking the fence out, the wave fence they're leaving tomorrow, I think, that to empty it, then it'll be back to, to finish pulling the rest of the old wave fence down. And then in the, closer to you, in the east side of the existing marina, you'll see a little float in the water. That's where they're building the new fixed pier to where the gangway will go down to the aluminum docks, which will be here at the end of the month, beginning of April. So there's a lot of work going on. It's utility stuff gonna happen towards the end of the month. But that's pretty much on the marina. Any questions?
Outstanding. Absolutely outstanding.
And then I, I just had a couple photos of the fuel pier, if you guys wanna see them. Alright, so the, the fuel pier will be open while we're open at the Maritime Center. We're gonna shut down an hour before because we have to do daily inspections, shut down some of the equipment, stick the tanks. And, you know, and reconcile all the, all the fuel we sold for the day. Go to the next one.
Greg, on the six thousand gallon fuel tank, is there any way that we can make it a little bit more pleasing to the eye?
Yeah, we're.
Is it gonna be any shrubbery or?
Yeah, we're so, we, we're gonna go back in front of the, the historic commission very shortly with the fence design, which is gonna be the same six-foot fence that's existing right behind the fuel tank.
Yeah.
That was approved already by Historic, so we'll stay with it. The fire chief is just looking at code to make sure, one, we can put a fence around it.
Awesome.
And if, if, and, and in addition with that, we're working with Dayponts to, to come up with some type of landscaping design to go on the backside of it. Just to soften the corners a little bit.
Fantastic, thanks.
So that, that's just a picture we took off the camera. Go to the next one. That's standing on the dock looking back at the little shack, spill, the spill, small spill prevention kits in there. And really, that's tiny. So, and then there's your pumps. Go ahead, Chris. So the, both, both gas and diesel have a hundred and fifty foot of hose on the, on the reels. The only nice about the reels are to retrieve them, there's an electric motor to help out with that. So you pull them out manually and bring them back. So we'll be able to hit the, the, the small fuel pier. And then we're also gonna be able to use the west side of State Street Dock for larger boats. We'll have plenty. And, and we're installing a, a pump out, pump that we got through a grant from the state on the corner of the dock. So we can pump out vessels both on the small fuel pier and bigger boats on the end.
When it's in operation, when you're using the hose, will that little door open? No, or not? You will be pulling the hose right through the hole there.
No, that door opens up. We're gonna take the, we're gonna take the hoses down and leave them on the dock, because that's where majority of the smaller boats are gonna come in too. It takes two seconds to bring them up to the pier. We have, there's a French drain cut into the concrete that the hoses are laying. We also got to know one of those little rubber mats to put over top of it, so we don't have any issues with ADA requirements. But most of the time, the hoses will stay down on the dock. Bad storms are coming through, that kind of stuff. We'll, we'll, we'll put them away. They won't be, they won't go away every night. The pumps will be all shut off, so you can't pump fuel. And there will be locks on the lift, the lift gates. And there will be locks on the lift, the lift gates at night. There's any other pictures on there, Chris?
This is very informative.
Oh, that's a dock. There you go.
That's a dock. It definitely is.
Sure is.
Um, interesting enough, I mean, on my walk, my morning walk, I run into the guys checking in every day.
Yeah.
You know, we've got to know each other pretty well down there. Um, they actually have praised the the quality of the those. They says, you guys went for the top, you know? Uh, they said, these things will be here for many years to come. And they said, that that was really one of the first times that they've worked with the, that type of material and those docks. But they says, you've done it right, you know? And there'll be quite a bit of life to that. He did mention, to your point, you know, at some point, he thinks that they may have to come back to do a little bit of adjusting at some point. Uh, but he says, that's a natural process.
Yeah, there's always gonna be a little bit of work. And and the company were, that did all the fuel installations. They're they're a good company. And they're not going anywhere. So if we have issues, you know, we have a one year construction warranty on the project, so.
Tony, ship shape and Bristol fashion. We're going for the best. We do, we do it right.
We're gonna, we are gonna, we're gonna get some canvas covers made for them. Because those LC, the 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 lights, they need to stay on all the time, especially when it's cold out, so they'll burn out. So we're gonna get some covers made that we can take on or off easily for the bad weather.
Sorry, Greg, we still have target for Memorial Day?
For the marina?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, uh, I'm holding them to May eighteenth. We're we're not, and if anybody asks, until I see more progress, like the docks actually show up.
That's a big part of it.
Then then we're we're starting to pencil in, like people, the new assignments and that stuff. But until we see everything, I don't wanna get anybody false hope. So, it's coming.
Well, it's not that they're not committed to do the work. They certainly are. Let me tell you, they there every morning, regardless of weather. And it's just amazing to watch them.
Thank you.
Question for you. In the diagram, there's the a fast ferry tie up. Is is, what kind of fast ferries could we be expecting here?
Well, it's it's the same one we've had coming to the State, the State Street Dock, the the
Okay.
The Providence, the Newport ferry.
Okay.
They've been stopping in Bristol the last three or four years now.
Okay.
It's just just for them.
They're just the same one. Okay.
Yeah.
Greg, this is very informative, very clear, and very exciting. This has been, this has been a long, long time in coming. So we just need a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
We have motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to receive and file in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, thank you for all the work there.
Thanks, Greg.
So Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I four, and this is the public notice for CRMC in regards to Andrew Bernstein with the project location of four seventy two Papa Squash Road. That requires response before March twenty second.
Motion to receive and file?
Uh, second with a little bit of discussion.
Go ahead.
Um, just a question, really. I know we've had quite a few of these before us.
Yeah.
Will this interfere at all with recreation boating, fishing, commercial fishermen at all? I mean, they popping up everywhere along the bay there, you know, so.
No, this this location, absolutely not. This is down down deep in Papa Squash on the other side. The the only discussion I had with CRMC on it was the the variation they want for the, the height of the boat lift isn't level with the gunnel. Supposedly, back in the day, the state didn't want these boat lifts. You ever seen them? They they said at the end of the dock, put your boat on it and it powers up. Um, so they put all these stipulations in. They're six inches higher due to the wave action in the area. Uh, the only thing is that the Harbor Commission doesn't meet until next Monday, so they haven't weighed in on this. I'll have them get a recommendation to you. But I don't think we, once, the next meeting is it's the thirtieth, so it's, this is due on the twenty second. But this doesn't cause any problems. There's no moorings. There's, you know.
They have a pretty arduous process to to, for approval. And I'm glad this comes in front of us. We're glad that we have this open dialogue.
Yeah. We we, I go on, I go on site, I go to the property, I look around, I I take a look, we take boat rides. It's ten degrees out. We go out there, we take a look and and make sure there's nothing that's really gonna interfere. It stays consistent. Every dock is consistent with the dock next to it, as far as how far they're out, that kinda stuff.
Thank you.
You want, we had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I five, and this is Economic Development Coordinator, Chris Vitelli in regards to the Reynolds School revitalization project.
We have a lot on this agenda tonight, don't we? We do. So I will be brief.
Did you see what I did there? Did you like that?
So in your package, you have this presentation, so I'll just cover the highlights. So we're focusing on the Reynolds School, which is on High Street, just west of the Town Common. Um, the building was decommissioned by the school district two thousand nine. Uh, up until recent history, we were renting out classroom spaces to different organizations and individuals. Um, for a brief time, the school took it over because they thought they may need it for COVID nineteen safety protocols. Um, but afterwards determined that they would get through that spiking cases. We began looking at the long term use of the building and its conversion to different public uses. So this council voted to lease the second floor, part of the basement to the regional school district. And we've also begun the process of moving the Department of Community Development over into that building. So just to break out the outline of what we've done to date, so phase one uh, was moving the administrative offices to the second floor. That's been completed. They moved it in December. Um, they have a two year lease with an option to renew. And the first phase really was just to get them in there, make sure the space worked for them. Um, and we've heard a lot of good things to date. Um, the second phase, which we anticipate to be done this spring, is the build out of the first one, the east side. The full Department of Community Development's gonna go up there. Um, and right now, those office spaces are just being finalized, wiring's getting completed. So when we look at why we're here tonight, it's, um, what are we gonna do with the west side of the first floor? Uh, as well as upgrading the building for the long term use. So as you guys, I'm sure are very well aware, there's a beautiful auditorium in there. Um, certainly, it's underutilized space. And what we'd be asking for um, as part of this next phase, and our funnier request would be to upgrade and rehab that auditorium, stabilize the balcony, and build that out for future public meetings in a gathering space. Uh, in addition, this would also cover installing new public lavatories for ADA accessibility on that first floor, a new conference room for public meetings and deliberations of boards, and upgrading HVAC for the entire facilities. So there is a very old HVAC system, and we've worked a lot with our engineers to come up with a plan that we think um, will help us, especially with all this talk about safety and air quality, a new system for that facility. So when we look at the scope of the project, just on a floor plan level, um, the southwest corner would, it's currently a classroom. We would convert that into a public common space and new ADA accessible bathrooms. Um, that would serve the new auditorium space. The idea that we are moving some of our municipal offices up there. Um, this is an excellent time to really utilize this space. And we see some great potential there, including moving the council up there, having this be a dedicated chambers for those meetings, as well as some other large reports and commissions. Um, and then on the northwest corner, we have it designated as a conference room and chambers, or executive chambers, if you will, um, that is accessible from the dais, from the balcony in the auditorium. Um, and that can be used for uh, different boards and commissions as well. So, working with Bruce Thorin, over the last several months, we looked at concept designs for the auditorium space and trying to take into account all our different boards and commissions. Um, so the concept you see here would be for this body, a five member council with highlighting the fact that we'd be building up the dais and we'd have dedicated seating, a little more space to operate, uh, as well as seats for different department heads and other staff within town to deliberate during meetings. Um, component of this project also includes audio visual upgrades. With our architects' help, we worked with consultants to determine the size of the budget, based on the size of the space and what type of things we need to be aware of to really build this out the way. Chambers and meeting spaces in the twenty first century designs. Um, so certainly, we take the work that we've done here as a template for what we can do up there. And then, uh, as part of their design, as I mentioned, we also looked at accommodating larger, larger boards and commissions. Um, HDC, we have seven seven board members. And so this dais could accommodate boards up to nine. And there is also the opportunity to, um, you know, really put up the curtains and delineate the difference between you, the council, and some of the other boards and commissions that are part of the town. Uh, in terms of precedence, Bruce Thornton looked at other meeting chambers and designs that have been implemented by councils across the country, really. And so you can see from the pictures here, they pulled a lot of similar elements based on the building and the space that we have up there. And just to go over the benefits, first is, this is a historically significant building. And for a long time, it was really an underutilized asset for the public. And so, you know, we'd be giving a new life to this building, to these spaces, and celebrating its roots as a great school, again, getting more activity in there throughout the year. Um, the other thing is, when we take a look at, and I think there was even a comment made at the beginning of the meeting about um, large meetings, um, we really don't have large public meeting spaces within the town. Uh, these current chambers have a maximum occupancy of seventy five persons for the fire marshal. And that would really be standing room only. If you guys can see in the crowd, we don't nearly have seventy five chairs. Um, the Reynolds School, the auditorium space is three thousand square feet. Architects tell us that we could have, um, at a minimum, double seating capacity. Uh, and then that doesn't really consider the standing room or the space on the balcony. So just gives you an idea of our ability to hold larger in-person gatherings. Uh, the last few things I would say is funding availability. Um, part of this funding that we're requesting is from the rescue plan funds that have already been discussed before the council. And really, um, these are funds that we wouldn't otherwise have. So we think it's a good use. Um, and last is, this plan aligns with our efforts to try and consolidate our footprint and make our municipal operations more efficient. So when we get to dollars and cents, um, you can see here that we broke out our funding sources, um, which were designated the rescue plan funds, um, as well as the sale of public property. So a part of that is nine Court Street, which the council has had discussions about already. Uh, but in addition, we also would like to use the remaining funds from ten Naomi to allocate towards the completion of this next phase. So with that, I just wanna thank you and open up for questions.
I do have a few questions. Let's go to project overview. Uh, when you referred to bill, build out, um, what do you mean? From my clarification, I'm a little unclear, what do you mean by building now?
Certainly. So, um, for both phases, for the first and second phase, um, as you know, the Reynolds School, they're larger classrooms. And so to accommodate, um, the staff and how those different spaces are used, some of the spaces were subdivided. Uh, in addition, when the school was decommissioned, um, they cut all the data cables in the building, for example. So to really get this building to where it need to be, so it could be occupied and utilized for municipal or office spaces, that we worked on. Uh, in addition, we learned that the electrical within the building also had to get upgraded to the standard. So with that, we worked, um, in the first phase, we worked with the school district. Um, so if there was any specific needs that they had, that came, that was separate, that was funded through them. But just to make sure that we aligned, um, their needs with our vision for the space, um, they were part of our conversation with Bruce Thornton from the beginning. Yes, so they've been up there on the second floor since December and.
So they're, they still have items that they need to get out, so they're heating the building and they're monitoring it. And so, um, they actually haven't turned the keys over to us and they're not ready to. They need a few more weeks. But I, we are in regular communications. In fact, today I spoke to the facilities manager and they're, they're they're still monitoring it daily to make sure that the heat's on and that there are no leaks. So it hasn't officially been turned over to us, because they have their belongings still in there. They are, it's working out well with the school district. In fact, we had a meeting there yesterday on the second floor. They're very pleased with the space on the second floor and they have, they they've been, they've been, they paid the invoice too for the work that needed to be done there. Uh, that was exclusively for them and they've been paying the rent, so we're pleased to have.
Um, the other question I have is, uh, when it comes to the counters, where the council would sit or the other boards or commissions, is that, has the stage been removed, would have to be removed in order to accommodate for this? Is this on the floor level, not on the stage, correct?
Yes, and Mr. Administrator.
So we had a great deal of, uh, we spent a great deal of time on on the stage with the the architects. The problem with the current height of the stage, we would need some type of a lift, which was costly. And it didn't really fit the, uh, the the forward looking stage, uh, council dais. So they dropped it down, uh, so it's just probably the same level that you're on right now, uh, the entire stage. Um, it's easy to to take down. So that's where we'll see if it's pushed forward now from the existing stage. It's squared up and it's pushed forward towards the audience. And that's the same level right into the rear room, which is the executive chambers room in the back. So the stage that you see today is gonna be dropped down. It's actually built, it's framed with two by six construction, so it's very easy to drop it right down.
Okay. I was hoping that was the case, because I would feel awkward to sit up on the stage for meetings. It would be like looking down at all people. I mean, it is, we do that here somewhat, but we need this to sort of see everybody understood. But to sit in a full stage height would be very awkward to.
Yes, it was a reoccurring part of the conversation, that we felt it was inappropriate to look down onto the audience. It just didn't feel right, but you need to be up enough so that people can see you. We're not so high that it felt like you were in the ivory tower.
Right. Exactly. Okay. Those are my questions.
Mr. Administrator, you would just answer that and then?
I I just didn't want it to be missed that Chris Vitelli did mention a curtain. And in the images you'll see, when the council, it's the council's chambers. So when the council is there, you'll see the town seal, town of Bristol. There are curtains, uh, Chris, if you can switch to that. When there are other boards and commissions or the school committee is meeting there, uh, the curtains would close and it would, uh, and so that there isn't any confusion. So it's another feature that I think is appropriate.
Agreed.
I just wanted to ask you on the schematic, this one here, it looks like the council chamber is arch, slightly curved. And on the other ones in color, like that one, it looks straight. I just wanted to make sure it's gonna be slightly curved so that we can see each other.
Yes, it it will be. And I know that this concept, um, doesn't really do a good job of describing that. But yeah, I know that that's feedback that we've heard in the past and we incorporate that.
It was, it was a conversation, as you all recall, that we had about these chambers. Also, part of the thought process was, it it's mentioned a few times, the school committee wasn't engaged in it, but they were, they were thought of as all of this was was put together, for example, nine seats. Also, if you go back, Chris, if you could go to the council one, you'll notice there's a seat on the left and the right apart from the council. And that purpose was for the administrator. So a-again, if you look at, if you spend So a-again, if you look at, if you spend, I can't see if you're from home, but we have folding tables right now. And it is inappropriate, in my opinion, for the people that are sitting to my left and my right to sit at a folding table. It is. So. I wasn't the only one, but.
It makes sense. It's all, we are all elected officials, so.
Sorry, Mr. Slitson.
We're going to raise you up, sir.
Chris, I, I love the design. I'm definitely, I, I love this project. The, so I noticed the council looks out and the LED screens are behind us. Will we, are we. Are we going to have laptops for the laptop hookup? So while you're giving your presentation, I don't have to, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so.
Keep turning around.
So part of the work that we did with the architects was to. Explain how we use our chambers and what type of features we need, we're accustomed to. And so our hope is with any technology. It's something that we can take out easily. It's reusable. It's something where, you know, we don't put it in and then. It's a twenty-year project to try and take it out and upgrade it. So I think with that. Mindset, you know, that's how we're going to look at the technology. On the dais and with that, I think the idea. Was, you know, for those larger crowds, for the larger meetings, you'd have those big screens there for people to see. I know. Even with Zoom, the platform that we're on right now is you can, you know, log into the Zoom meeting, you can see on your device. But this just gives people another option to have something that they can follow along with during those meetings. So for the council, the idea would be to invest in either. A laptop or tablet that you'd have at the dais. That we can get content there, what's on.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering if, if, if there's a way to just like cook up and then, you know, my, the presentation's right there.
Yeah.
You know, and we can.
And so, and, and I guess with that, I would say that the architects gave us a very. Good dollar figure in terms of the budget. So as we enter the next phase of design, work with them. And we're preparing these documents for putting out to constructions. You know, that's something we can certainly.
And I know it, it's in our packet as well. You know, I mean, I know I can pull them off on PDF. So, but I was just curious.
Can, can always do it like a basketball, you know, right, coming down, you know, it just. Unfolds, you know, folds it up against the ceiling, comes down, unfolds down, you know, drops in front of the council.
Outside, I just, I think it looks wonderful. I think it's, it's a great use of the space. And something that wasn't said as part of the conference area, but it is not forgetting what the building is. It's celebrating it was a school. So keeping that feels, not to, not to remove what's there in the history. It's celebrating the history. In both in the auditorium and, and the conference room that's in back, it, it will keep the feel. It will not pretend that it was once a school. Mr. Chairman, just.
I just had a quick question. So for people that are in the balcony, there'll be a little, is there a podium?
So in this concept, there's not, but the idea would be that there would be a podium in front of that council.
So they don't have to come down. Okay. So they could just step off and then Nathan could say.
Yeah, so we are working with the architect, architects not to get to do much detail, but would be to. Cap the number of seats there. So they're thinking about buildings up on that balcony.
Okay.
Just to make sure that it doesn't get overflowed if there was a big nation or whatnot. But yes, the idea would be that. You know, members would come down before you'd be at eye level.
They'd be at eye level. Okay.
Just a quick question. In terms of the current space, the, the space right here, is there any plans for how this will be used once? Go over here.
I think. We're a couple of years away from that, but I, I would say there's a couple of concepts that looking at, I always refer back that two thousand eight study. One of them was a parking lot. I'm not so sure. It could be just sell the building, but I, I don't see a municipal need for this building. That has its serious flaws. It would, it would require a, a large investment if we're planning on staying here for many years. Right? I would, before you move on, I'd like to make a few other notations about the project that Reynolds.
Wait, one second.
I, actually, I'm liking the idea when you're talking about municipal parking lots, much needed. And we could do a meter system where to try to recoup the revenue, where people have to cash in and you've got to drop it on. Near dashboard. I mean, you know, well, like you said, you still a few years ahead, but I, I, I think I love the idea.
There's also an opportunity of making it a green space. It is a parking space. It's a green space that would help with runoff, would help with, as we did at the town beach of having plantings, right? To clean the water as it made its way down to Bristol Harbor, if that was, but there's, I guess there's no shortage of good ideas, right?
Yeah, Diane has already suggested some grant opportunities for a green parking lot here, which would open up the, um. The war garden and would really be nice and benefit the downtown businesses, but. But where we're at right now is we're about sixty percent at least of the way done with the first floor rentals for community development to move in. We're planning on that this spring. So that's moving along well. The plaster is done. The trim work is going back in. And as far as the, the Chris's presentation with that large meeting room space, the, the floor is actually. Pretty good shape. We're trying to save the floor. We lifted the tiles and the original floor from the building is still in very good shape. So we're going to try to save that. The ceiling, the skylight, you've mentioned before, the skylight would stay and we're going to accent that with some trade ceiling effects. And plaster on the ceiling really looks nice. And the rest of the building, part of this phase, it would be to build ADA compliant. Handicap accessible restrooms. And that would be in the classroom in the southwest, the corner of the building. So what you would be agreeing to today is for us to continue to move forward. Use the ARPA funds and the sale of public buildings to help us complete this phase of the project. Which is a public meeting room space, handicap accessible bathrooms, restrooms and all new HVAC for the building, which is key. Heating and air conditioning.
And then just in terms of phase three, how, how long would it be until that phase is over? Like a two-year project or something like that?
So with the council blessing tonight, you know, we would go back and begin conversations with. Our architecture firm, this will have to go forward with schematic design. I think that the build out, we probably looking at next summer of completion for this phase. You know, but with the HVAC system, which I think is going to be probably the biggest component. We're trying to do a mini split system, just because the very tall ceilings, there's not really a lot of place to hide some of that ductwork. And we think that with the mini split system, one, and we believe it's most cost-effective, but two. Is it'll give the different rooms the greatest amount of temperature control. So. With that, hopefully that will reduce the amount of time of construction.
And then, and then how many phases are we talking about? Is it?
So with this. Where, as we said earlier, the school is already on the second floor, community development, we're sixty percent completed. And this would really conclude. This, I guess, section of the project. As we look at what the school district does. You know, we can come back and look at the long-term needs of the building. But I think with all the work that we've done to date, we've really. Left a lot of options open for us, even with the line work we're doing, the walls we're putting up and whatnot.
So do you, do you leave for like down, downstairs, for example, like on the first floor? Is there space for? The administrator's office or for key offices? Like where do people come in and out mostly to pay their taxes, for example, or for the clerk's office? Would they be on the first floor? Easily accessible? And is there space there for that left already?
If I may, may answer. So we, when we first looked at the building, we had the architect. Lay out a floor plan for the entire town hall so that when we're doing work, as we're going along, we're not going to have to take anything apart and redo it. So all the work on the second floor, mo- the majority of the work on the second floor, there are a few items in petitions that were put up. We didn't pay for that, school district did, and they may have to be removed. But everything, everything else we're doing, we're trying not to have to do it twice or take it apart. That's why we spent the time and we did the master. A master plan of what it would look like if it was a town hall. That plan shows the town clerk and the tax collection on the first floor. The second floor was finance, community development and the town administrator. And, and with the, with the meeting room there and the council executive session room on the first floor. So we did, we did think of what the future use would be in the event that we. Moved out of Ten Court Street and moved and consolidated into one building. So there is, there is a plan that we keep referring back to. Yes.
The regular, it's a regular elevator, right?
Yeah, it's a regular, well, it's not that old. It's in very good shape.
Excuse me, I'm excited.
Yeah, I make a motion that we move forward in support to the, and continue the construction.
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to.
I just would, as part of that motion, we also are just requesting that you mention the proceeds from ten Naomi Street. And nine Court Street towards, and, and our, I believe our post already been.
Yep. I think it's, if I may, is that, that it's specific, we can, we can call that out, but I think it just needs to go to building. And then have that flexibility there and it will apply here too. Instead of, I don't think we need to hit an X dollar unless, unless the council agrees. Just go to the building. Is it?
Second.
Seconded that amended motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you for all the hard work too.
Yes, great project.
We have a lot going on in town, my goodness.
Mister Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I six. And this is again, the economic development coordinator, Chris Vitale. In regards to the town of Bristol, CDBG annual application.
So we have more stuff going on. So we took a year off from the CDBG program. The state earlier in January announced that they were opening up applications. This year, they have a little over twelve million available, which is significantly more than they regularly do. So with that, they. Really loosened it up, lifted up a lot of caps on the dollar amount that we could request. And so as part of your packet, you have a breakdown. We're putting in for. Three public facilities slash infrastructure projects and one project in support of the Bristol Housing Authority. The total funding we're going to be requesting through this application is two million ninety-six thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. All these projects score very high on the state's priority list that they indicated back in January. And so. We're very hopeful that we can get even one or two will make a very big difference when we look at our.
This seems well thought out and, and we looked at the scoring and said, this is our best possibility of success.
I make, I make a motion, we approve the resolution and allowed all. The administrator to file the provision on behalf.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I seven, and this is town administrator consenting. In regard to the theme street seasonal parking lot lease with Russ Russ Realty, plat ten lot thirty-two.
Mister Administrator, anything you want to add on this? I think it's probably self-explanatory, but.
This lease is essentially a renewal of, of same terms as the last several years. This is the small lot across from the Prudence Island. The new Marina parking lot, the Prince Island dock, small lot in the corner of church and. Theme Street. So sixteen twenty-five a month and it's for six months, May first through October thirty-first.
You know, the businesses appreciate this and it's used by visitors and. Frequenters of the, of the businesses over there. I think it's a great thing.
I, I, I do have to say though, that there is a clause in here that in the event that the property is sold. We would have, we would opt out. There, there would be a thirty-day notice to void the lease.
This, of course, belongs to Russ, Russ Realty, which is. All that's going on. What's this council?
Make a motion that we go forward and allow, allow the town administrator, get permission to the town administrator to renew the lease.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to renew the lease. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed?
Mister Chairman, members of the council, the next item would be IA, and this would be for the lease on. The theme street seasonal plat lot with Russ Russ, but on plat ten lot forty-one. There's two different leases, two different lots, so they need.
So this.
I don't mind telling you, Madam Clerk, I was looking at you going.
I'm not that tired yet.
We, we lease two parking lots annually, uh, so, uh, south of State Street. So the second lot is across from the Robin Rug. Mill Building and that is. For thirty-six spaces in which the harbor master sublets for permits. So that's actually a revenue generator for us. The lease has not changed in terms in several years. It's been twenty-four thousand dollars for at least the last three years. So they, during negotiations, he's asked to raise it two thousand dollars for the year, which I think that was.
And we still see pros, we still see profit at that point.
Yes, we do. Greg, Greg is here. I don't have the exact number, but I know, you know, we just went over our budget.
Sure, we, we get eight hundred and fifty dollars a parking space. I didn't do the math, but it's. Thirty-six.
No, I hit my TV remote. Now I'm going to do the math.
So thirty thousand, six hundred dollars. I gotta calculate. So, yeah, that, no, I gotta, you gotta love technology.
So just to review, you said we were at twenty-four thousand, the new negotiated price is twenty-six thousand. And we're at a net thirty plus, almost thirty.
Thirty, thirty-six, thirty thousand, six hundred dollars. Plus, we, we get, we do, we do very well at the overnight parking on the small lot. We get ten dollars a night there. So. For anybody who says overnight.
Couple of points about the lease. This one also, there's a thirty-day notice where we would have to void the lease if the property is sold.
Make a motion to approve the plot ten lot forty-one lease.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed?
Mister Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J one, and this is RFP nine seventy-two. This is for the Silver Creek East Branch Channel Restoration Project. Bits are opening today at twelve. We received four bits for this project. The first one was from R Zap Zoppo Corporation in the amount of three hundred twenty-five thousand, five hundred. The second one was from Flint, Flint Enterprise Inc. in the amount of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. The third one was from JML Escavation Inc. in the amount of two hundred forty thousand, six hundred and seventy-one. And the last one was from Semco Echo Contracting LLC in the amount of a hundred and eighty-six thousand.
I make a motion that we refer to the town administrator tag in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Discussion is, could you just give us, this council, just clarity quick? I know Silver Creek East Branch, just really, just a nice quick overview and for the public too.
Sure, thank you. So this is the area of Silver Creek, primarily behind the Levejean neighborhood. It's to the west of the Levejean neighborhood and then it flows south.
So Arnold Lumber, Chestnut Street, for example.
Correct. And this will be a a water, you know, water quality restoration of that stream so that it will hopefully alleviate some of the stormwater issues we had in that neighborhood as a result.
The flooding's were pretty extensive over there.
Yes.
Yeah. So it'd be a good project.
Yes, the stream really needs to be restored.
Yeah.
So just for help.
Diane, there's going to be a lot of these grants coming. Be ready for the next five years, the next five years, they said.
Yes.
All right. So we had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, last item on this J is on RFP 974. This is for the 2022 parade production and telecast services. Bid was also again today at 12 o'clock. We received one bid from Jen Little Media in the amount of $12,500.
So if you're looking at this going, what the heck is this?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is, I have limited knowledge, so please bear with me, is that the, what used to happen was the TV, Channel 6, I believe, would, would broadcast and they're no longer doing. So the Fourth of July Committee is looking for an opportunity to get it out into the public. And I understand too that there's, before it was just broadcast and there was no revenues generated for the Fourth of July Committee. This opportunity, whether it's this person who bid or just what we were trying to get done, was to have an opportunity to maybe share in the ad revenue. But primarily to get it out to a wider audience. That's what I know about it. Again, I don't speak for the Fourth of July Committee, but I have a kind of a peripheral knowledge.
So they're going to pay this $12,000 or whatever the amount is to, to have it done?
Correct. Correct. But believe that, that the combination of the greater exposure, advertising, sharing those ad dollars, also my understanding that they used to receive funds from the broadcast and those semi recently disappeared. So.
Where would it be broadcast on, on live stream on, on their computer or would it be somehow on a TV of people?
You've gone past my understanding.
Great question, but I don't know. So did, I'm sorry, we, we did not get a motion. Is there a motion to refer to the administrators?
So move.
And may I ask, is the Fourth of July?
In the fourth, yes. So move. Second.
Motion and a second to refer to the Fourth of July Committee and the administrator. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. I believe we reached.
I don't have anything else.
There's nothing else? That's it? So moved.
We don't really need a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, everyone here for your efforts and energy. And thank you to the public for sharing your thoughts. We appreciate it. Have a good night.